Okay, I'll call this regular session a council order on September 8th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You burned it, right?
I would. If we, for the upcoming anniversary on September 11th, if we did have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. God of peace and mercy on this upcoming anniversary for September 11th. We lift up the souls who perished on that day, welcome them with loving arms into your kingdom, comfort their families and friends, help us to mourn alongside them with a constant compassion that can only be rooted in you. May you look to the first responders that day to inspire us to live bravely and courageously and to selflessly protect others in need. May we look to those who opened up their homes to the stranded and displaced that day to stir us to be more hospitable. Having seen the face of evil and darkness, may we be steadfast and faithful in pursuing you, our perpetual light. In Jesus's name, we pray.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Coman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Soss?
Here.
Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Soss?
Here.
At this time, Mr. Holmes, you have a couple announcements to make?
Yeah. The code officer submitted his letter of withdrawing his name from being considered auditor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Soss's withdrawal.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Soss? Mr. Stein? Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
In light of that, I have given all the council members a letter of interest from Nicholas Smith, and also attached to the back of that is his resume. I would like to recommend to the council tonight that you appoint Nicholas Smith to the unsecured term of Taylor Sappington, since he has already moved on to the council for to do that.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Nicholas Smith. I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Soss?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. Flowers?
We don't know that yet. We will, too. We will.
This is the first time I've seen any of this.
The first time anybody has.
I'm sorry?
I think that's the first time anybody has.
On one, answer questions from council that would ameliorate anything.
Let's finish the vote.
Mr. Flowers wants the same discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Flowers.
Well, I would just like to kind of go over this a little bit before we vote on it. I don't know if that's, if we gotta do that. I mean, it's the first time, like Susan said, or Mr. Harmony said, this is the first time anybody's seen this. I've spoken to this young man once, and I think he's stepping into a pretty important role in our city government. I think, you know, a little vetting might work a little bit better. But I know we need to have somebody else fill that role, but I would just like to have gone over this a little bit more.
Do you want to do that here, or do you want to go into, you want to make a motion to go into a new session?
I don't think I'll need an executive session, but if I could just at least read.
Why not?
How many, how many members are voting already?
I think everybody except me.
Okay.
No, I started with Greg, so four.
I think maybe the best thing to do, well, there's four votes. We have to finish the vote. But procedurally, I think the way to address Mr. Flowers's concern would be finish the vote and then have someone move to reconsider. That puts the item back on the table officially. And then there can be time to look through it and discuss, and then have the final vote.
Tonight?
Yes.
Well, my, my interpretation of the charter and everything is our city manager is the one that makes the hiring, firing recommendations. Seeing how it's a vacant position and the city manager runs, the city manager has vetted this individual and made the recommendation to council. And I trust the city manager's judgment and him bringing it before the council. It doesn't matter if I need to read it or not. I believe the city manager is doing his job and referring it this way.
Has to vote on it.
Because we have to finally confirm it.
That's my point.
Hold on, order for a moment, please. So, at the suggestion of Mr. Rob, I think we should finish the vote here, and then we'll move to the next recommendation. If we could finish the roll call on where we're at.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
So now we make a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
What do you hope?
Um, Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Soss?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Flower?
Yes.
Cap?
No.
Sorry, Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Or no?
So the motion to reconsider fails. The original motion is final.
Correct. So, at this point, I will give leeway, Mr. Flowers. Do you have questions for Mr. Smith?
No. I don't. No, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Welcome aboard, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, council.
Just to let council know, I can already, Mr. Smith has already pointed out an area of where I failed. So I think he's done his best. So I thank him for pointing that error out, and I will correct it at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, we have a few minutes to go through. Minutes from the regular meeting on August 11th. Did everyone receive those? If there's any additions or corrections?
I noticed some items, some of them nothing substantial, but nothing I feel the need to just go through line by line. In this moment, I can, if it's okay, I can just send those to Ms. Harmony.
That would be fine.
Okay, good.
I would like to note that in the roll call, I was not at the meeting, but it doesn't reflect that there was a vote to excuse my absence.
Well, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think there was.
Was there a vote to, I don't.
The regular meeting?
The regular meeting on August 11th.
I don't think there was.
I thought we did.
I don't.
I'll look at the video.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, so to make that a formal, what, Mr. Rob, if, we can make a motion for Ms. Harmony to add that to the minutes, if we actually did for video do a motion to excuse Mr. Coman, if we did it, we can add it to the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Correct. The minutes can never, even if something should have happened, the minute, but didn't, the minutes cannot reflect like that. They can only reflect what actually happened, whether it was correct or not. Isn't that be my mistake if we didn't do it?
We can check, and maybe at the next, maybe we can correct it.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to accept the minutes from the August 11th meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Soss?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Then we have the minutes from the special meeting on August 20th. Is there any corrections or additions to those? Call the roll to accept. Motion to accept, yes.
I'll motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Soss?
Yes.
And then we have the minutes from the special meeting on August 25th. Any additions or corrections? I make a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Soss?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
I have to understand from that one. Okay, and then we have minutes from the special meeting on September 3rd. Any additions or corrections? I make a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Soss?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
I have to understand from that one.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
All right, moving on to citizens' comments, I ask if you want to speak, please keep it to three minutes, if anyone would like to speak.
Yes, sir.
Hi, council. My name is Casey Cox. I just want to talk to you about the festival my wife and I are putting on among another committee of people, October 4th and 5th. It's the Second Annual Appalachian Literary Arts and Storytelling Festival. I talked to you guys about this last year, but we are doing it again. Last year, we ended up, in total for the weekend, around 800 people ended up coming in. I think we had somebody, people from the south of Georgia coming in, and as east as Tennessee, maybe, I forget. But it's cool because we had a map of different things you could put in about where you're from. Well, for those of you that don't know, it's very similar to what we did last year. We'll have a stage on the square. The square will be shut down on Saturday, and there will be live storytellers, poetry readings, live music throughout the day, and then there's a crafty art bus for kids, and that was like a hit for all the kids in town. And what else? There's also a liars contest, which was a hit last year, where people just go up and tell, spend the biggest lie they can, and just go on for all. All that kind of culminates in a concert at Stewart's Opera House by Megan B. afterwards. So I just want to invite everyone in council, and everyone who's watching. It's a really good time to celebrate our Appalachian culture and just, you know, the storytelling history we have here in Nelsonville. So, yeah, and then the Sunday is typically a brunch that you can sign up for. That will be, that link will be posted. We have a Facebook page and a website. So if you're interested in attending the brunch, that was my favorite part of the year last year, because we got to hear the stories of different organizations and what they were doing around here. We got to see musicians just play different types of Appalachian music, and it was just a great time to kind of honor our heritage. So, yeah, just want to honor you guys all of that and let you know you're invited. And we tried to do the best that we can to integrate local businesses. So although the square has shut down, all the performers that were involved, we give them vouchers to go to, like the mine, or Alfonso's, all the places on the square. So, we will have vendors. I think the only food vendor has it right now. I need to double check, like a kettle corn vendor. That way, we're driving business to businesses on the square. And there will be different vendors, kind of similar to the sidewalk sales that have been happening pretty, pretty recently. So it'll be a pretty busy, fun day, but like I said, just want to invite you all to it. Again, that's October 4th. Yes.
Your liars contest, we used to have a liars bench here in Nelsonville.
Really?
We spoke of it, the older, oh, did I say that? The people that lived here a long time ago, we, we talked about getting a liars bench, because it was right up where the old westin school was.
Okay.
Set right there, and I think you should designate a liar bench, and then whoever wins it, put their name on it.
That's a great idea. Okay.
Is that October? October 4th of the, I mean, it would be like a prize.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Mr. Cox, can you share with us the Facebook page that people could go to?
It's just Appalachian literary arts and storytelling festival. The page, I think it's an event as well. But we have a website, too, with all our donors and sponsors and things like that, too. And the schedule of events is on there as well.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Stuart Brooks, 123 East Golden Street, Nelsonville. The liar bench used to be on the square, as you said, and he used to say, "Welcome to Nelsonville." And he'd say, I think he used to say, "Nelsonville lumber company," but it would be something nice to bring back. I think it's around 80, 90, 100.
I was 60. I could do it.
Yeah, sleep on it. But that'd be nice. I thought about that before, around, yeah.
Yeah.
My reason for tonight is, I didn't know if we were going to get someone to speak with our code enforcement. I will say that I'm very pleased with what he has done. I think he's been out and about. I see a lot of improvement, a lot of homes that have been taken from the shrubbery and so on and so forth, and cutting. So I think he and, and the other young lady, I can't remember her name, was with him, has done a very, very good job in a short time. But what I would like to see, for somebody on city council to tell me, when are they going to put out the delinquent notices, the people that are delinquent in absentee, the homes that we have that have been sitting there for years and years and years? We have a code, you know, right now, today, talking about you're applying so much for a year, and it goes progressive to the next year and next year. But I can sit up here today and have a lot of pictures, but I think we know where all the homes are. It's something that I think the public should get to see. Plus, I think the public has a right to see who had not, the delinquents in our rental fees, the $35 that is given to rentals, and I think being beings and so on and so forth. So I'd like to have somebody that could address that. And I think the gentleman has been working on that for quite some time. I think it goes back to maybe March of 2018, when it was passed. And I know there are still a lot of homes that are vacant in this community that look absolutely terrible. And I think it's time now to bring these people, you know, the old days, we used to take bad checks and put them on the wall. But to tell the people who are not paying their fair share.
Thank you.
I've asked, I've asked Mr. Clemens, and I've been asking this for about a year and three or four months. And I've come to some of the meetings, some of the other meetings in the evening, but I've not gotten any farther than sitting here today. Can you let me know when that might happen?
I believe the city manager, Mr. Holmes, has been working on that.
Okay.
That's an administration.
Right.
Issue, not necessarily council as, as per se. So I do believe Mr. Holmes is working on it.
He addressed, maybe he could tell us when we might expect that?
Yeah. I have a code officer right here.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see him there.
Yeah, now he might hide.
Hold on.
I know that you've been working on a vacant property list.
Okay, if I may, if I may, we are going to do department updates here shortly, okay? I think that'd be a more appropriate time to address this. This is citizens' comments.
Okay. I'm finished, I'm finished, because I've asked you, like, say, for about a year and three months, I'll wait.
And, and, yeah, that'd be fine.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Moving on then to business and organizational comments. I believe Mr. Courtney is here from the ad hoc dimension.
Good evening, council, friends and neighbors. Good evening to you all, and happy September. Upon us here. Wanted to take some time to present what the council, or the advisory commission's been working on as far as the transition plan. I shared with Ms. Harmony earlier today the plan that was adopted on our meeting on the court. It's largely unchanged to the one that was shared with council on August 11th. You know, I wanted to take some time, first of all, to start out expressing the gratitude I have for my colleagues on that commission. You know, we all came into it with differing opinions and differing ideas on what is right for the city of Nelsonville going forward. But the charge you all gave us, gave to us, was to assess what the course forward for the city is in light of issue 23. But the majority of the time that we were working, issue 23 was the law of the city, and we were looking at the charter being abolished at the end of the year. And we were steadfastly committed to seeing issue 23 fully and effectively implemented at the end of the year. You know, I'm just going to speak from a legal perspective here. I'm not going to be speaking from a political one, which is, is difficult, you know, as you all know. Law and politics are separate, but they do walk hand in hand at times. So our whole process from the advisory commission was one of the legal side, the law of politics at the door. And I just have an immense amount of respect for my fellow, my fellow commissioners who were able to do that and take an objective look at all the variables and the possibilities that we were looking at come January 1st. So if I just, you know, kind of point a personal privilege there, Ms. Laura Boynton Schiff, Mr. Terry Kins, Ms. Joanne Maru, Mr. Neil Summers, and as well as Mr. Rob and our secretary, Ms. Lydia Coopley. Everybody put in a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate all of you for that. So, like I said, our goal was to study the issue, or the, what issue 23 meant for the city of Nelsonville, and advise council on that. And that was what we endeavored to do. We would call this thing the transition plan, right? And I, I think that's not a great name for it. It was kind of given to this document before we really started meeting. For me, it's more of a risk mitigation form. And that's, that is the lens we looked at, how we studied and advised, was what are risks, and how are those risks mitigated? And in a legal sense, risk is a really weird thing, because number one, first, you have to identify it. What things can create risks? Then you have to assess that risk. What can that, what harm can that risk cause? And then you have to accept, you have to assess what your acceptable tolerance of risk is. And, you know, risk is not always a guarantor of harm to be caused, but it creates an environment for harm to happen. So, all that to say is that, you know, nothing that we talked about is guaranteed to happen, but the possibility that it can is a problem in itself. And that is both risk for potential litigation against the city and potential risk for interruption of service, which, number one, you know, service is the reason why the government exists, right? It's the co-advization of effort. That's why we pay our taxes to it, so the streets run, so police and fire run, so we have good and safe drinking water. Whether or not the city gets sued, whether or not service is getting interrupted, that costs the city money. So that's, was our bottom line, we need to find ways to prevent the devastation happening. That takes us down. That is what the impetus behind this is, this document is, risk mitigation. Unfortunately, because of the wording of issue 23 and the way that it works with the Nelsonville City Charter, which, you know, backdating before the ordinance that abolish issue 23, that's the one I'm thinking of right now, just for clarity's sake. Charter is still in effect, Charter is still in effect up until the end of the year, issue 23, 23 of the year. So we have to work with the powers that are enumerated under the charter, trying to get towards that goal, which is not necessarily right. So that means, unfortunately, some of the risks that we saw this council was not able to do a lot to address. And that's why this is a two-part, two-part document here. Part one, you all can do. Part two, what the statutory council ought to do, or what our recommendations for them to do far. So ultimately, the things that we found for the charter council to do, obviously, you know, the December problem is something that we found early on, which was a very large risk, we believe. I think you all conducted yourselves in a way that swayed that risk greatly. But just on a very bare-bunk level, making sure that things here still run smoothly, making sure that the drafted resolutions, ordinances that we have, that we're going to recommend to the next councilor, statutory councilor, making sure that those conform with the standards and practices of Nelsonville City Council in Ohio law, making sure that those have been run through legal counsel, and they look good, they look ready to go, and ready to be adopted if the statutory council so wishes to do that. And the final thing was, just being sure that, working with both, you know, the December government, working with statutory government, to ensure to get key positions within the state of your bill, you know, that we, that there is still, there's still opportunity for offices under the statutory government to remain unelected. We're not coming to a government with vacancies. Being sure that we have identified folks who may be good candidates to fill those, the statutory council to evaluate, and then work with the mayor to appoint. So, any questions from council so far on that part one of this plan? Excellent. I'll go ahead and just move briefly into the recommendation you have with statutory council. Really, it's six legislative items and then one non-legislative item. And a non-legislative item isn't necessarily the most pressing, the most dangerous, but it does put a risk to the city. So the first one, reauthorization of the city's police and fire departments. The risk there is that the current police and fire are authorized under the charter, and chapter 715 of the Higher Vice Code says that municipalities may, that's a key word, right? It was a small word, it means something. May and shall. Shall, if you have to do it, may, and you could do it, you don't have to. Our vice code, municipalities may establish police and fire. So with the charter no longer existing, the authority, and this goes back to the, the revised code is the archetectonic structure for the entire municipal system in Ohio. And then the charter can restrict that, right? So, with the charter being legal basis for Nelsonville's police and fire right now, that's gone, there could be an argument made in court that those no longer have legal standing, our police and fire departments. I don't know a judge that would, you know, someone gets a parking ticket, I don't know, and they try to challenge that, say, or sorry, we don't have a parking, unfortunately, really, speeding ticket. Someone's going 75 miles an hour down Canal Street. They get pulled over, there is a potential for them to go to a judge and say, "Well, look, the police department in Nelsonville doesn't have legal authority to write you this paper, therefore I shouldn't have gotten a ticket." Right? It sounds ridiculous, but that is a, that is a legal possibility. So we're recommending the statutory council adopt presidencies, or ordinances, both just mirroring So we're recommending the statutory council adopt preser, or ordinances, both just mirroring what we have now, re-establishing both the police and fire departments. Number two, affirmation of the city's debts and obligations. It kind of came through the grapevine to the advisory commission, that there was concern amongst city employees, many of which had just reached new collective bargaining agreements with the city of Nelsonville, that those would stop after, you know, those would stop existing after December, after the charter is abolished, and they'd have to be renegotiated. While that is not necessarily true, you know, I'm not a trial attorney, I don't know what those, those collective bargaining and, and ways to get out of them. I'm not saying the city would try to do that, or the union would try to do that. It still is a concern that was expressed to us. And a really easy way to address that concern is just adopting a simple resolution, city of Nelsonville will honor its debts and obligations. So we went ahead and drafted something like that, would recommend that be adopted after the, after the abolition of the public charter, just to assuage any of those concerns from folks the city does business with. Point number three, reauthorization of the income tax. Similar to a police and fire, Nelsonville's income tax was authorized under the charter. We would recommend that it be reauthorized under statute. The revised code lays out that process, chapter 718, and that would have to go to a vote of the people, which, you know, can be a risk in itself, I think, but a judge, in my opinion, would be much more likely to be lenient or to be harsh on municipality on the tax front, more harsh than on the, you know, speeding ticket example I gave. So this caution is recommended there, and we are going to recommend to the statutory council that the income tax be reauthorized under that process, established under chapter 718. Number four, establishment of a board map. There's been a lot of discussion about that. The revised code requires city council to adopt boards for their elections. Council decided to accept the Ohio League One voters offered a comment and help draw those. I didn't participate directly in that process, I tried to keep an arms length away from that, just, I, I didn't want to, you know, cross wires or anything there. But from the outside looking in, I think that was a really well-done process, I was really impressed by the product that they made. It makes sense, it's common sense for the map within the laws that govern those from the state and the federal government. So we went ahead and drafted the ordinance, or resolution, sorry, to establish those, as well as the written description of what the boards are. I will note that for those to be adopted, it will have to be, that map would have to be produced, you know, physically printed out on a high profile, a high resolution copy, as well as if you get to have a GIS to access that, to, you know, for the, the board elections, to be able to make sure they're certifying the right folks. And additionally, we included in that resolution a request to, to the board of elections, inform Nelsonville's precincts to the boundary lines. That's a pretty common practice, and we think it makes sense, if I live in the first precinct, I'm voting for the first board, that sort of thing. Code confirmation. This was, uh, this was a not difficult task, but just a long one, was, we've been operating under a city manager on Nelsonville code ordinances for the last thirty years. City manager not going to exist anymore. So there's a question of if there's this ordinance, there's this code, who enforces it if we do not have a city manager? So the most simple way to do that is to, we drafted a, an ordinance that would strike every mention of city manager in the code and replace with mayor. Might not, that, that should definitely be reviewed by legal council before it's adopted, which is going to be another big lift to do, but it's, it's necessary to be sure that, like Stuart was saying, with the, with code enforcement, right? Clarifying who that is and making sure that we have legal footing to enforce those things. Number six, combined directorship of public service and safety departments. Under the standard general statutory construction, there is both a director of public service and a director of public safety. The revised code allows for those directorships to be combined into a single office. So you have a service safety director, one person responsible for both sides of, both sides of the house to do that. That is common sense. Good government to me of doing things more efficiently, more effectively. So we're going to make that recommendation, that that be done by the council, and that, that way we can, you know, number one, save one job salary benefits, and number two, find a good qualified person who is able to do both those jobs and serve the city well. And that brings us to our non-legislative recommendations. Reviewing the state code, it is sprawling and at times very, very confusing. And in other times, very outdated. You know, it, for me, it's kind of like, you have a fence in, in your backyard, but you haven't re-lacked in three or four years, right? The thing's growing up over, you can kind of see it there, but it's not necessarily doing the best job it can, and it's not looking good. So we're going to recommend to the statutory council that, again, I, I said at the beginning, this isn't the most urgent thing, but it needs to be done at some point, probably the next two or three years, it probably should have been done sometime in the last, you know, three to five years. Recodification of Nelsonville's code ordinances, that's just a fancy word for, we're going to read through this, we're going to streamline it, we're going to find things that are outdated, right? The, the parking meter section of the code has not been updated, there's still enforcement for parking meters in Nelsonville. There are restrictions on which ways you can turn out businesses that don't exist anymore. And just making sure that we are still doing things that the code says, and if we're not doing those things because they're not necessary, we need to change the law to reflect that. So that brings me to the conclusion of, of the transition report or the risk mitigation plan, whichever one we would like to use. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Anyone have any questions?
I do, about the board map legislation. I heard you say ordinance and then resolution, and then it looks like the sample legislation says resolution.
Yes.
And then an ordinance. So I just wanted to make sure I understand.
It, it should be a resolution because it's temporary in nature, it's, you know, ten years is still a temporary thing, ordinance is a permanent law.
Thank you. Thank you, and the entire advisory commission, all of your work, putting this together. No matter what January 1st brings for the city of Nelsonville, this is valuable.
And that's, the commission asked me to bring it here tonight for that reason, and it's, no matter what this pre-encourage size, no matter what we look like in a couple months' time, we just hope it can be of some value to the city. And again, I really need to express my appreciation for my colleagues on that commission.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I would like to take a moment to repeat the names of the commission members. You, Mr. Courtney, Joanne LaRue, Laura Blankenship, Neil Summers, and Terry Koons. And thank you all for stepping forward to be on the commission, thank you. Have any committees met since the August 11th meeting?
Our utilities, our utility commission met. We discussed the, well, what's the events is here, we discussed the, you want to, can you tell them?
Yes.
About the.
Yeah, I believe we have some legislation tonight that.
Would you, well, I'll, I'll just briefly.
Sure.
Yes, we, we discussed the rumpi hookup for the city to run their, what's that waterfall?
The Lichee Water.
Lichee Water. Lichee in Mexico, in Spanish, if you don't. But to, to run, to run that water down to our plant. And it was brought up that the distance from, from rumpi's dump to the plant could dissipate some of the, is it methane?
Ammonia.
Ammonia. Ammonia gases, so, and it shut off valves, we'll explain that. And we talked about storm sewers. And there is going to be some storm sewer work, and there's also going to be some water.
Water phase four, the city has.
Yeah, phase four water is going to be ready to start, he gives a map, laid out on where it was. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Any other committees?
We have a planning and development meeting as well. We discussed the DORA. And Mr. Holmes is currently working on that proposal and, from my understanding, will be presenting that to council in the next regular session council meeting.
Finance.
We have finance.
The fountain?
The fountain, that's right, thank you, and the fountain, which there's legislation on the agenda tonight for the fountain. We, Fred's been having some meetings about the fountain, the fountain is at a point where it needs to be repaired. And they've had some meetings with companies that can actually do a fountain restoration. So we, we have legislation tonight to accept that, to get, they will take the fountain down and they will ship it to Alabama, I believe, and you know, redo the work on, on the fountain and bring it back. We're trying to get it done this winter, so we can have that available for spring. That was all we had, planning.
Finance also met, we discussed several things, some of which are in the ordinance 5525 for tonight, amending the 2025 appropriations ordinance. Not all of the items which we discussed and passed out of committee were, like, there was a shortage of, of time, I believe, for the city attorney and the city administration to develop legislation. So there are eight other things that will be coming up at the, our second meeting this month, at the very least. One of them being the installment of nuisance fees, another one, a resolution to approve back pay for an individual who works for the city. We started the session on the idea of hiring a clerk for the purpose of keeping meeting minutes for all of the commissions. Mr. Holmes has gotten back up and running. We received an update from the incoming auditor that notes on the proposed budget should be ready in time for committee meetings ahead of our second September council meeting. We have started discussion on an annual interview ordinance that would generally approve expenditures that go over budget on certain line items if, if appropriate. And we also are in the process of establishing a storm sewer fund with a line item for capital improvements and appropriate money into that, for the, to complete the design of the storm sewer improvement.
I believe there was discussion too of a possible pay increase for council members.
Oh, um, I believe that idea originally came from Mr. Flowers. If I remember correctly, I mean, that's what my notes say. We are, at this moment, collecting information on what similar communities around Ohio pay their legislative body. And actually, I missed, I forgot another point. We did discuss the advisory commission clerk's pay. However, an increase in pay did not make it out of the committee because she's already, she was already being paid at a step three level of, like, council clerk. So it didn't seem appropriate to go beyond that.
All right. Anything else?
I don't think there is, there's no other committees that, right?
So no other committees that met since the last council meeting. All right. Moving on to department updates, I'm not sure who's on for this meeting, looks like Chief Pollard is coming up.
So I got my stats for the month of August. We had 337 calls for service, initiated 159 traffic stops, issued 70 citations, 12 parking citations, investigated nine traffic crashes, made 16 criminal arrests, and six warrant arrests. So coming up, we also have our annual qualifications for handgun, the range. Two officers recently completed the stops and approaches instructor course, so we're going to be looking to have some kind of in-house training on, on a better handle stops and approaches with vehicles. We did an update and delivery of our new taser tins, so training for those is ongoing, we're doing all that in-house, because two of our officers are taser instructors already. We're doing all that in-house, and it's just kind of a ongoing step-by-step process, making sure everyone's used to how these new tasers function because they are pretty different. Just when I heard that the sheriff's office recently released the peaceful encounters program. So that's an optional program, any resident of Athens County can enroll in, and you're able to provide any kind of pertinent medical information, be it mental health issues, or just any kind of issue that law enforcement should be apprised of. It's shared with dispatch, and it's only shared to an officer when they're responding to you, that way they can have, you know, heads up that, you know, this person may have dementia or a mental health disorder of some kind, help them build a better picture of what's going on while they're on their way. That's a great program, I encourage anyone to get signed up for that, or encourage your loved ones, who might be suffering from something, to sign up as well. We do have pending the appropriation of the canine funds, canine training, it'll be scheduled for early November, and that takes about eight weeks, and it's handled by the C P E T R of Pine Grove, the whole sheriff's office, can I train for you?
Investigated and.
I'm still in the selection process, I've got it narrowed down to two.
And it's officers that are already.
Yes.
Stat.
Yep.
Any other questions for Chief Pollard?
I would like to thank the police department for the daily reports, I really appreciate.
We're proud it's not just for you.
At least my name's not there. Not yet, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just got one more. When you take the 337 calls.
Uh, when you take the three hundred and thirty-seven, uh, calls for services, but then you add that across, there's a, I remember, I think I've asked this before.
So the, the calls for service are actually completely separate from all the other items.
Oh. So, so these aren't calls for services, these are?
They're technically calls for service, we just tally them everywhere.
Uh.
So, uh, the calls for service are not, do not include traffic stops.
Oh.
The traffic stops include the traffic citations.
Right.
The parking citations don't go into the calls for service. Uh, the traffic crashes typically are included in the traffic citations. Uh, generally, there's a citation issued for someone who's found a falling detach. And then the arrests, uh, are also tallied separate from the calls for service.
Wow.
So.
I had that all wrong, didn't I?
So when you add them all together, it's, the total number of calls for service is technically greater than three hundred and thirty-seven.
That it must be, sure. All right, thanks, Chief.
You mentioned awaiting appropriation for, uh, um, the canine program. Um, I remember that being on the finance committee's agenda. Um, the meeting for, I believe that was community meetings on August fourth, um, when I wasn't able to attend because I was out of town. Um, do you remember that?
It's almost like.
I'm so sorry, I forgot. I just panicked for a second because I thought it didn't end up moving on to me. Okay. I can read.
Uh, Chief, um, any update on, um, the, uh, the gym in regards to the?
Uh, Mr. Betts, just today, I saw an email sent a draft to review, um, that I haven't had a chance to go over yet. So I was going to talk to him in a second.
So there, um, the goal was, I think, was by October, wasn't it?
Sometime in October, as I recall, so we're.
I think we're getting closer, isn't it? Yeah, drawings are ready. We'll make sure we capture everything.
Very good. Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Tolliver. Okay, um, any other department updates?
How's it going, everybody? My name is Lawson. I'm the code officer here with the city. So far, from last meeting, uh, August eleventh to today, September eighth, I've issued forty-six notices of violations. Um, we've taken in two complaint cases that's to do with, um, like welfare, reports of rats, points of mold, stuff like that. Um, we received one hundred dollars in citations. Within a month, I've issued seven citations. Um, seventeen permits altogether, four contractors, three zoning, seven blocking the street, um, two transit vendors, and one disabled apartment. So permits altogether was three hundred dollars. And to answer Mr. Brooks' question, vacant properties are still in the process. We've sent out packets. If one of them comes to my office, I'll show you what I've done. But the problem I'm running into is it's hard to track down dead people. It really is. Like, it's, it's sad, but most properties around here that have been in these people's names have been deceased for years and years. And taxes are just, there's a lot of, or what's funny is some of them are paid, and I gotta try to find out who's paying them. And it's very hard. Because as soon as you start looking into a rabbit hole, it goes dead, and then you gotta look into another one. It's just, it's hard tracking people.
That's what you call deadbeat.
Yeah. It's hard tracking people.
Why don't we go after the people that are alive?
Yeah. We are.
Okay.
Give them to my office. I'll, I'll tell you. For sure. No, you're always. I like I said, I didn't invite anybody. If you want to come in my office and see me, I'll show you what I've done. We're going.
And, and we also attended a code enforcement, uh, meeting, uh, Austin McShale.
Correct.
And, and myself in, um, it was in, uh, London?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the old Dutch. You forgot already?
That's the old Dutch. That's right.
We, uh.
We had a meeting and we ate, uh, fried chicken.
Yeah, and code enforcement is everywhere. It's throughout the whole entire United States and probably other counties. I don't know, but guaranteed.
They had some, they had some good, uh, some good information, I.
Correct.
Those things are quarterly, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure that you and Michelle probably.
I'll tell every one of them. But, uh, Coons motto is to educate people, not to punish them.
That's right.
So.
So you, you have addresses of these people that your dead people have bought them?
Like the vacant properties?
Vacant properties. Are we allowed to see that?
Yeah, come on in.
Okay.
There's a bunch of them. There are some places that actually look vacant, but they're not. There's people living in them. And those are the places that we try to look all the most.
Any other questions?
I got a question. I, I think what I'm looking for, looking for is like, just like your, you know, the, your taxes, you know, come out of the city or come out of Athens County. We, as we know, each year, they'll list that in the paper and they'll put, you know, who's paid and who hasn't. Who, you know, and I think that's what I would like, I think we'd like to see, uh, uh, down the road that these people that, these homes that sit, um, vacant for years, I mean, we're talking twenty years, and are owned by people who are alive. And they were rentals and they've sat, and they continue to sit. Uh, these are, these are something we should see that fall into the code that we put back in, you know, eighteen or two thousand and eighteen, and they should be paying this scale of what they owe. But as a public here, we should be able to see that down the road. You've got, you're handling a big job. I'm not saying it should happen.
Four months in.
Yeah. But I would say that we should get to see this at least twice a year or quarterly, that you have, you know, just like when we get in here, your taxes are sent out, and we'll all look in the paper, and we'll all see who hasn't paid, or who has paid. I believe it's a quite amount of money. Because I could sit here and I could fill this wall up with a lot of pictures of homes that have been sitting for years and years. Some are owned by local, some are owned by people who just neglect them, and they should be paying back to when this ordinance was put in. That's what I think we would, you know, some way down the road, we'll be able to see, and are they paying or aren't they paying? That's what I'd like to see, and I think the citizens would like to see. And get these off of, you know, there's houses here that are, that are terrible. You know, you own thirty-three across from McDonald's. I sit here all day and I name them. The house is sat there and sat there and sat there. Is pigeons or they're, they're, nobody, nobody seems to. She's alive. I've seen her.
It's condemned though.
Well, it's condemned, but she's still alive. So, let's see if we can't, you know, pick those people up.
Correct.
And start to get them to paying. We'll go to court.
Well, I think that comment also refers to all entities that own property in the city, public, private, non-profit.
Oh, I.
Not just private.
Right, I surely.
Okay, well, I, I just want to clarify that.
Oh, yes. No, I understand that.
Okay. So do you have any other questions? Have your questions been answered?
They've been answered. Yeah, they've been answered, but I would like to have a timeframe, whether it's end of this year or next year, that we look at this list. This list will be given out. That's all. And I know, you know, so that's, that's where we're heading.
So, as we know, the administration is working on it. It's not easy, and I thank them for their, their effort.
That means they're trying to issue the violation to the US government.
Well, they're alive.
That's questionable.
Um, is that something that, um, the code department can implement on their own if they choose to, with the, the public notices, or, um, do they need to be authorized to take a loan?
I don't have that answer. Um, I guess I, to the question whether any additional authority needs to be given to the department, I'd have to go back and do a, a review to see if additional authority would be given, or if it's sufficient for a code officer to.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Mr. Holmes has a comment.
Uh, I don't think we need a further, um, authorization. I got the message. I, I, I've heard, I've heard Mr. Bro.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Any other department updates? I believe that's it. All right, moving on to ordinance for a second reading, uh, ordinance forty-five twenty.
Excuse me, council president.
Yes.
We had a guest here that wanted to speak.
Okay.
For the Southeast Ohio Builders.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to get into that before we get more down more.
All right, that's fine.
Um, this is Rick Dorstel.
Dawson.
Dawson. He's from Southeast Ohio Building Department. Uh, we had the first reading at our last council, and I explained to council that I would have, if it was available, I would have to come up and answer any questions that councilmen have. So I'll turn it over again.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. I just wanted to, um, assure you that what we do is enforce the building codes, commercial and residential, and we're certified by the Board of Building Standards of the State of Ohio. If you have questions while I'm here, please ask. We serve, uh, about ten counties right now. We go all the way from, um, this is. Barton's Ferry, Logan, Grand Police. We, uh, serve Logan, uh, Megs, Yawby, Washington, Logan. We have certified building official, backup building official, finance examiner, structural inspector, Mark Peters, our structural inspector. We have electrical inspector, plumbing, permit tech, permit clerk, and we have a backup for each of the, in every one of those positions. We provide digital plan service and plan reviews, so you don't have to drive or go all the way from here to very out of our offices, where you go all morning, submitting applications, submitting drawings, submitting payment. It can all be from the company to your office or your pickup truck. We, uh, are allowed by the state to take thirty days to do a plan review. My office does them in three weeks or less, and that's been consistent since we, since I started in our building, as a building official for our, uh, department. We do next-day inspections. You call today for an inspection, we're there tomorrow. Ninety-nine percent of the time, almost without fail. Many times, as in the case today, our electrical inspector did an inspection in Logan that's not even scheduled till tomorrow, so. If they have time, they will pick up an inspection while they're in town and take care of those. There's no cost to your department, to your city, um, for our services. The plan check fees takes care of all of that. So, um, there's no fee for you. There's no additional fees for extra inspections. Our fee, plan approval fee, covers everything from foundation to final. We now have what we call a one-stop shop. We provide structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspection services. And that's approved by the state through health departments, and I'm happy to say that on the way down here, I, I got an email from Athens County, and, um, we will be signing a contract with them to start doing all the plumbing inspections here in Athens County. Uh, office is open from seven to four fifteen and Friday, seven to noon, but you can leave a message anytime you want. We give everybody our personal cell phone numbers. You can call me personally on my phone. All of our inspectors' phone numbers are given to you when you call for inspection request. We, uh, like to say that we, uh, we live up and down the river. We got our haircuts, we buy our groceries, go to churches, and our gasoline all the same places. Your guys, this is probably one of the better prices. I just noticed that tonight. Uh, um, and our prices, uh, our fees are less than the state's. I have made sure that that's stayed that way, especially in plumbing. We have, um, we're doing a really good job with all those things, and we are making sure that we are very competitive, even though we don't have to be. The state can say those prices, and we could use them if we wanted to, but right now, we're doing very well because we're, we're doing a lot of inspections and we're proud of what we do. And I'm very proud of my staff. They're doing a great job. If there's questions that you might have, we, we do, um, commercial, which is called non-residential, given codes. We do commercial. Everywhere we have coverage, and we do residential anywhere that's requested. We have three cities now that we do residential in. Uh, and again, our fees, when I took over as building official four years ago, uh, the only residential we had was the city that was Marietta, and we lowered our fees forty percent to make it more easy on residential owners and the residential contractors. So. Please, if you have questions, I would love to answer.
What, what is your residential permit fee? Because they're not lowering the state because the state doesn't require a permit for residential.
That is correct. The, the municipalities that do ask for them, for example, a re-look permit is on a fifty dollars and fifty cents. Every, we say permits, but they're part of approvals. Every permit we issue, residential, we have to send, uh, one percent to the state, and non-residential, we have to send three percent to the state. So that's an automatic, that pays for us being a certified building department.
And, and do you require licensed inspector, or licensed contractors for residential or residential?
Not required.
Uh, I thought with the, with the way the state said it is, you charge a deeper permit that we, we use licensed contractor.
No, sir, that is only on non-residential, commercial. Plumbing, electrical, mechanical. That's the only three licensed contractors that are required in commercial, not residential. So you as a residential contractor?
Uh, I'm a licensed electrical contractor.
There you go.
At the same time, I, 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 I've been through this before with, uh, cities and individuals. About being licensed and non-licensed.
No, you're not required to be licensed for residential.
Because, yeah, like I said, there is no residential license for the state law.
Correct.
Who else? Mr. Flowers, did you have a question?
Well, I did, but, uh, I forgot it by the time you got to.
Was it residential or commercial?
I don't know. No, no, uh, you, you said there's no fees. Uh, uh, that, are you talking about no fees to the people that are building and getting the inspections, or are you talking about a fees?
No fees to Melso. All the fees that are paid are paid straight to us for a permit. That pays for everything that we do.
By the person you, you're.
Correct.
Okay, that you're issuing a permit for.
Yes, sir. Um, the city does not pay us.
So if it's a risk, if it's a, uh, commercial, who pays for the licensed plumber, um, et cetera, et cetera, to go out and inspect? The homeowner, I mean, not the homeowner, the business?
The owner who's by purchasing a permit.
Yes.
Pays for those inspections by purchasing the permit.
Got it.
We just verify that the electrical contractor is licensed.
Yeah.
On that job. We don't, um, we don't go and inspect his license. We just, when you apply for a permit, you fill out, and when we gave you our, uh, on that, you just fill out who the electrical contractor is and his license number and that.
You can look that up.
We can look that up through the state or.
You guys charge the re-inspection fee?
Rare, no. From foundation to final, we do all this. We all, we do every inspection.
And the, the initial fees are set up in the, inspections are set up in the initial permit. And basically, as many, as many inspections as you need, you get.
That's right.
Okay.
Unlike the state, which gives you three. Well, they just changed that. They give you five now. But, for example, Mark did a, um, storage building in Del Police. He did a foundation inspection twenty times.
Probably.
Maybe more. And we didn't charge anything extra for all of those extra foundation inspections. Cause they want to pour a little bit today, a little bit tomorrow, a little bit next week. We do quite a bit of virtual inspections. For example, somebody needed to have a licensed plumber come and verify that a toilet in a commercial building that was working properly after he re-did some remodeling. That contractor drove two hours from Columbus to come down and see and flush the toilet for the plumbing inspector of another department to flush that toilet. My guy will say, show me that toilet flushing, and everybody happy. We're, we're much, I, I'll tell you this. When I got into inspection industry, I came from the construction industry. And I swore to myself, I will never treat people the way some of those inspector treated us. Customer service is what I'm all about. My staff knows that.
Yeah. Yeah, the state has virtual too.
They have just started, yes. They were bragging about that recently, and we told them we've been doing it for three years, they couldn't believe it. Yeah. And, and it was the state inspector that required that inspection, yeah.
I, I do have a question. Um, if someone asks for an inspection, do you send a report to the city?
Yes, we can, we generate a monthly report, and it could be even more often. But we generate a monthly report to whomever you wanted to go to. And it will tell you every permit that we took in for that month and where it was at and what it was for. Yes. You could go to every one of them if you wanted.
Any other questions?
Do you have fines for work done without permits?
Yes, sir. The fine is, um, twice a permit. I like to give people warnings, cause especially in the new, new municipality that we assume is possible for. They don't know it yet, and not everybody got the memo. Um, we just started, uh, in, in McCallisville. And one of the local contractors from Washington County went up to do a re-roof on a big church there. And they used to be under another building department, and that building department said, we can't give you a permit, that's not ours. So they contacted us, it's been for three months already, we've been there, and that guy didn't know it yet. So instead of finding them for starting work on a permit, we said, hey, let's get this straightened out. They come down, get a permit, and it's all good. I, I don't credit my annual budget on how much I can get for fines.
Well, I understand, but, but still, people gotta understand that if they don't wanna follow the rules, there's gonna be a fine imposed with.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Cause you got a lot of individuals that like to do, uh, their own and under the table work around there.
I understand. We'll, we'll work with them and, uh, try to educate them. And, and I'm all about teaching this. You needed a Friday meeting for all the contractors come to, or whatever, Saturday or something. We'll have a class, whatever it takes to, to help promote what we want to accomplish. Yes, sir. Very willing.
Anybody else? Yeah, any other questions? So this discussion will fall under ordinance forty-eight twenty-five that we're gonna get to in a moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, ordinance for second reading, ordinance forty-five twenty-five.
An ordinance setting a new utility fee schedule. Whereas there are a need for the city of Nelsonville to establish and adopt a new utility fee schedule. Addicting to the new community's utility services, which the city provides to its utility service customer, including residents and businesses. Whereas the utility committee of Nelsonville City Council, then on August fourth, two thousand twenty-five, recommends to City Council a new utility fee schedule. Whereas City Council finds the new utility fee schedule recommended by the utility committee is appropriate and desirable for the city and is in the best interest of the city and its utility service customers. Now therefore, be urnamed by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby establishes and adopts the utility service fee schedule attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, as it is given A. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council. And that all deliberations of council and other committees, if any, which resulted in formal actions were taken in meetings open to the public and full compliance with applicable legal requirements. The permit shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. duly enacted by council on second meeting the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt? So moved, second. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? For call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bassell?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-five twenty-five passed. Uh, ordinance forty-seven twenty-five?
And ordinance, and ordinance establishing a city-paid maternity and fraternity leave policy. Whereas the city of Nelsonville does not currently have a paid maternity, fraternity leave policy. Whereas in order to be able to attract the best possible candidate for city employment position, it is necessary for the city to be able to offer attractive maternity, fraternity benefits, including paid leave. Whereas City Council finds it is in the best interest of the city to adopt a maternity, fraternity leave policy. Now therefore, be urnamed by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City Council hereby establishes and adopts paid maternity and fraternity leave policy attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, as it is given A. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal, formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council. And that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public and full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. duly enacted by council on second reading the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, motion to adopt? Second. Any, uh, citizens' comments? Any council discussion? For call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bassell?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-seven twenty-five passed. Uh, ordinance forty-eight twenty-five?
I have a question.
Yes.
This has, this is a second reading. That is got the emergency language.
I think for the second reading, um, so, so my understanding from my, my instruction to Mr. Holmes is that, um, he would like this passed today on an emergency basis, so it goes into effect immediately. But it is going on for second reading, so the first sentence of paragraph nine will not be read. Is that related to two readings? Did I get that correct, Mr. Holmes?
What'd you say about paragraph nine?
So the first sentence of paragraph nine will be stricken because, um-
It's not gonna be an emergency?
It will be an emergency, but there will still be two readings. So there's the first reading last meeting, the second reading today. The first sentence, which dispenses with the two readings, will be cut. But then the rest of that paragraph nine about it being passed as an emergency will stay.
So should, should this say, second reading, and, uh?
Yes.
Yes. And it should say eighth day of September.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
All right. And ordinance establishing the Nelsonville Building Department and authorizing the request to the Ohio Board of Building Standards for certification as a sub-department of the Washington County Building Department, EBA, Southeast Ohio Building Department, for enforcement of the State of Ohio's Building Codes for residential and non-residential construction. Whereas Council finds the need of the City of Nelsonville requiring establishment of local enforcement of the State of Ohio Building Codes. Whereas the city desires to enforce the State of Ohio Building Codes for the purpose of providing within the city uniform standards and requirements for the erection, construction, repair, alteration, and maintenance of buildings specified in section three, seven, eight, one point zero six of the Ohio Revised Code. Whereas the city requires the establishment of the Nelsonville Building Department and enforce the State of Ohio Building Codes within the city. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section six point zero two, provides, quote, "The council may, by ordinance or resolution, create, change, or establish any office, department, division, or subunit of any department or division or agency, other than those established by this city charter. Council may assign additional duties to any department established by this charter that may not discontinue or assign to any other office, department, or agency any function assigned by this charter to a particular office, department, or agency," unquote. Whereas Council finds it is necessary and in the best interest of the city to request certification from the Ohio Board of Building Standards for the Nelsonville Building Department to be a sub-department of Washington County Building Department, EBA, Southeast Ohio Building Department, to serve as the enforcement authority and accept and approve plans and specifications and make inspections in accordance with the Ohio Building Code for residential and non-residential construction within the city. Now therefore, be urnamed by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The Nelsonville Building Department is hereby created and established. The Nelsonville Building Department shall have full authority to enforce all laws, statutes, and regulations as provided for and authorized in the Ohio Revised Code and that Ohio Administrative Code, once certification is then approved by the Ohio Board of Building Standards. Council hereby finds enforcement of the Nelsonville Building Department shall occur as a sub-department of the Washington County Building Department, EBA, Southeast Ohio Building Department. Ohio Administrative Code, four one zero one point one, the Ohio Building Code, and four point zero one point two, the Ohio Mechanical Code, and four point zero one, the Ohio Plumbing Code, as promulgated by the Ohio Board of Building Standards, shall apply and be enforced within the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. However, the Athens County Board of Health may also enforce the Ohio Plumbing Code within the city. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect, drawn and asked for the earliest period permitted by law, following the promulgation of the Ohio Building Code and Ohio Mechanical Code and Ohio Plumbing Code by the Ohio Board of Building Standards through the certification process, adoption, and effective date of certification issued by the Ohio Board of Building Standards. The city manager is hereby authorized and directed to submit an application to the Ohio Board of Building Standards, requesting the board to certify the Nelsonville Building Department as a sub-department of the Washington County Building Department, EBA, Southeast Ohio Building Department, for enforcement of the Ohio Building Code for residential and non-residential construction within the city. With the condition, Southeast Ohio Building Department shall exercise the enforcement authority as necessary in accordance with the Ohio Building Code within the limits of the city. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as obligating payment of any funds by the city. Rather, this ordinance shall not financially obligate the City of Nelsonville unless and until such financial obligation is approved by separate organs duly enacted by council. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council. And that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public and full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point three and Nelsonville City Charter, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government. As the city needs to submit its certification request to the Ohio Board of Building Standards for approval of the establishment of the Ohio Building Department and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on second meeting the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Um, motion to adopt?
Well, um, before that, um, I did notice there are a couple typo sort of things. Um, should I or somebody make a motion to instruct the court to, um, make these things before we consider it out?
Sure. If you tell me what they are, I can read it to you right now, and then I'll have to record it.
Okay, so, um, paragraph two, little detail. Um, that Ohio Administrative Code should be the Ohio Administrative Code. Paragraph four, it doesn't look like the citation for the Ohio Plumbing Code is complete. It just says four one zero one, colon. Um, and paragraph six, um, now that's one sentence, about five lines down, where it says, EBA, Southeast Ohio Building Department, for enforcement of the Ohio Building Code should be enforced. Along with the, the provision we already discussed, where that first sentence of nine is removed.
Is there a good motion to?
So.
Is there a second? Second. Court, call the roll, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bassell?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Okay, motion to adopt? So moved. So, yeah. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
I just have one more question for you. Are you gonna require contractors to register for you?
That'd be up to you.
Like some cities do?
If you guys choose for that to be an option, we would consider it.
Okay, cause I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of places just have them register with no fee. And then there's areas that register them and then cost an arm and a leg. So they're closed.
Several municipalities that we, we serve do require that. And we just go ahead and continue that for them. I'd be open to your guys' suggestion. Mr. Holmes, if that's what you guys would like to do, we could.
Perhaps you could, uh, give us a template of that, uh, of those, how other municipalities do that.
Certainly.
So we might copy and paste it.
Okay.
And also, um, do, um, and then, I'm, I'm for this, don't get me wrong, but this is just, do you think that this might discourage building here in Nelsonville if we have these?
Not at all.
Cause-
We have many contractors, and I'm sorry, sir, we have many contractors that are asking, can you guys come into our municipalities?
Contractors wise, I understand, but, but, but people that say, I was gonna build a house there, but they've got all these inspections.
Legally, you're responsible to adhere to the revised code of Ohio for residential and the Ohio Building Code for commercial. That's the law. And if you're not doing that, as a homeowner building your own house, you're remiss in your responsibilities for law. We're just here to make sure that the customer and the contractor are both represented fairly.
Got you.
This, this basically ensures people are getting a safe product when they get done.
No, I, I do understand that, Ross, I do. I just, I mean, just thinking like, it, it's something we don't have now. And then when we have it, it, will it deter? I just don't wanna be-
It's not been our experience as such.
Thank you, thank you.
I believe Mr. Holmes has a comment. I believe Russell Holmes has a comment.
One of the main reasons that I am asking for this to be approved is for the protection of our citizens. And I'm giving you an example of my neighborhood alone. My next door neighbor on the right is in a nursing home right now, is in rehab. She had to have a bathroom done twice. The first time it was done wrong, second time they had to come back and redo it by a different contractor. The neighbor next to me had two air conditioning units put in. The first one was put in wrong, again, had to have another contractor come in and do it. If you skip two houses down, I have a neighbor who had a carport put in that we completely took apart, went and bought all new material, and had it done again. In that particular situation, that contractor required payment upfront. She told us how much she paid, but that contractor then came back and requested more money. So, this is really for the protection of our citizens.
Well, but Mr. Holmes, I'm sorry. How would this deter what happened to her? The guy was a crook.
The guy was a crook. Before she could even hire him, she had to, she had to get a permit. That's how it's going to happen. But it'll take, it won't happen overnight. Am I correct?
Well, the thing is, getting permits does not deter this type of situation. Always detours is something that's going right. Guy can go through, get money upfront, inspector comes out, says, hey, you're not doing a good job, and you say, hey, I'm not, you're not doing a good job, the guy still, you borrow him, he takes off, job's half complete, there's nothing you can do about it.
This isn't going to solve everything overnight. But, in my opinion, it's a step in the right direction. I don't think it'll deter, it won't hurt people building and doing, I, this will never happen to me, I'll tell you the reason it'll never happen to me. I got a brother-in-law who's a good contractor, has done inspections across multiple states. There's a lot of people here that aren't that force. And they don't, unfortunately, they don't contact Councilman Lawson, they get a recommendation, they just.
Well, that's why I was asking if we're going to register, because if we register somebody, they go through, we ensure they have their insurance, they ensure they put up a proper bond up in front, and that if they ask, we can give a reputation, yes, this individual is licensed, yes, they are bonded, this is their reputation that we have from the inspector.
Is that what you do?
Yes.
I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Court, call the rules, please.
Mr. Joseph Saw? Yes. Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Your comment?
Yes. Ordinance forty-eight, twenty-five, ten.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas the two thousand twenty-five appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of one ten thousand dollars to the general fund, line item one zero zero dash sixty-five, which is dash four one one three four, vacant property maintenance is necessary. Whereas appropriations of thirty thousand dollars to fund number forty-five, line item forty-five dash one zero zero dash eight zero one one one, fund four twenty-five K-nine unit, four K-nine unit for the Nelsonville Police Department. Whereas appropriations of the sum five hundred dollars to the general fund, line item one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero, contract services for audit costs is necessary. Whereas appropriations twenty thousand dollars to the general fund, line item one zero zero dash sixty-four, dash three zero zero one seven, city hall utilities for utility costs at city hall is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The two thousand twenty-nine, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance through the following funds. Appropriations in the sum of ten thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, to line item one zero zero dash sixty-five dash four one one three four, vacant property maintenance. Appropriations in the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of fund number one, four twenty-five, to line item four two five dash one zero zero dash eight zero one one one, fund four twenty-five, K-nine unit fund, for our K-nine unit for the Nelsonville Police Department. Appropriations in the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, to line item one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero, contract services for audit costs. Appropriations in the sum of twenty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, to line item one zero zero dash sixty-four dash three zero zero one seven, city hall utilities for utility costs at city hall. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by seven thousand. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to Section 4.11 of the Nelsonville City Charter as this ordinance provides for appropriations for expenses duly enacted by council on second meeting the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Dismissed. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? Yes, Mr. Flowers?
I have a question for Chief. We spoke of this in a, I don't know, was it the council meeting last time or whatever? I can't remember where it was. It was probably the council meeting. You wanted to take the appropriation out of K-nine's fund of thirty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Where did this other thirty-seven thousand, why is that there?
There should only be a thirty thousand dollar appropriation to the K-nine.
Well, am I reading it wrong? Because it says.
It says thirty thousand.
Well, but where's the seven thousand five, is that, is that, is that in the thirty for contract services?
There's several different appropriations being done in the same ordinance. It doesn't matter where you're.
But that still sums up to thirty-seven extra thousand, right?
But contract services isn't related to the K-nine.
Sorry?
The contract services for audit costs is unrelated to the K-nine fund for the Nelsonville Police Department.
Well, the relativity to it is not what I'm, what I'm really saying is the amount of money that's involved in this ordinance. Is it thirty thousand dollars that's involved in this ordinance?
It's the amount of each, 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 where it's got A, B, C, D, each one of those amounts individually.
Sixty-seven thousand five, I told you, all together.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Yeah. Yeah. Never heard that thing before.
Well, they're coming from different line items, that's why it's not added all up. If it were all coming from the same fund, then it would state the total amount and then tell you individually where, how would each divide.
Looks like it's the general, it says up on the top, and then the whereas, where they're coming from and where they're going. Well, it has numbers. Correct. Contract service audits, K-nine, hold on, one percent time, please. Property maintenance, they're on it.
Do you have questions about the individual appropriations?
Not good.
Any other council discussions?
In the third whereas clause where it's dealing with the K-nine unit, what is happening here where it says thirty thousand dollars to fund number twenty, four twenty-five, and then it has the front line item number that it says for number four twenty-five again?
I think it's the duplicate, I'm going to take the first one out.
Okay.
It might even say that in the line item name, it might have that duplication, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Well, fund forty twenty-five is the K-nine unit fund.
It seems like it might have that in the name because in one B, down below, it's described as line item number, fund number four twenty-five, K-nine unit fund. But, I don't actually look at any of the line items, I can't.
My email from the auditor back in early August said fund number, fund number forty-five, K-nine unit fund, forty-five. So that's, that's where it came from. Now I haven't checked the native information, but I think I just took it. So that's, that's where it comes from.
Any other discussion? Court, call the rules, please.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Your comment?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saw?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty, twenty-five. Ordinance fifty-one, twenty-five.
Councilman establishing a storm sewer fee for all water and sewer customers and creating a storm sewer line item. Whereas council finds it is necessary and in the best interest of the city to establish a three dollar storm sewer monthly fee to be assessed to all water customer accounts. Whereas, purpose of the storm sewer monthly fee is to provide funds for upgrades and necessary maintenance to the city's storm sewer infrastructure and system. Whereas, it is necessary for the city auditor to create a new line item for storm sewer fund. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby establishes a three dollar storm sewer monthly fee. The storm sewer monthly fee shall be assessed to all water customer accounts. The funds generated from the storm sewer monthly fee shall be collected in a new storm sewer fund line item. The city auditor is hereby directed to create and establish such new storm sewer fund line item. Funds deposited in the new storm sewer fund line item shall be used exclusively for upgrades and necessary maintenance to the city's storm sewer infrastructure and systems and for no other purpose. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and other committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second meeting the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Dismissed. Second. Any citizens' comments?
I got a comment.
Okay, one at a time, we have a few people here who would like to go first.
That's fine.
No, I'm just asking who would like to go first.
You're looking at me?
Whoever wants to go first.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'll go first. Years ago, a gentleman named Carl Young, Carl was very active in the city of Nelsonville back in the seventies. And Carl was very adamant about storm sewers and making sure they were clean and so on and so forth. We're taking, just like low hanging fruit, we're taking an easy way out here. I noticed the storm sewers even pulling up through thirty-three, once they started going in construction. Each one of them were full of nothing but debris, leaves, and so on and so forth. So until we get to that point, that those are clean, so on, this isn't charging the citizen an extra three dollars, this, you know, the street cleaner can't run, we have cars sitting there that are unop- won't run, sit there for months, the trash just keeps loading up into those, trash cans aren't removed from once the trash is moved and just sit in where the gutters are and so on. We have to help ourselves here first. I think we have to show some type of, that we're taking charge of doing everything we can. I mean, you can't get street cleaners up and down the roads and we can't clean our own storm sewers. What makes you think that charging each individual an extra three dollars a month is just going to get done? I don't see that. I mean, we did that when I was on council, those scopes storm sewers were clean, they were looked at, if you, and you had to make sure that they were open, and I see a lot of them clogged up. As I drive around, I see cars that in part with weeds growing up through them, you can't get water, you're going to get debris just backed up in them. So, don't you think that's something we should do maybe first? And see if we can't do it as a city and clean these up first before we start charging people? So you can charge it, don't take charge five dollars, ten dollars, but if we don't keep them clean, it's never going to work, they'll all get back done.
That's true.
Well, my understanding is there's no funding in the budget to allow for us to clean up for these sewer drains. So that's what this is for, is to so we go into a budget for the sewers for upkeep and maintenance. Right now, there's nothing.
We can't, we can't get the kids, we have young kids, we've seen them come here, Fred did a great job with that group, but we can't get city group at least going to clean the debris that's laying on top of them?
Okay, so, I believe this is a deeper problem than what you're addressing.
I definitely.
We, okay, well then I will hold my comments for council discussion.
That's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else have to comment?
Yes, three points. Sue Powell of Washington Street, Nelsonville. Have you checked to see if this is legal, that you're allowed to charge a fee versus or a tax on a utility bill? Just question, I don't need answer right now, but that has to be answered. Have you projected how much you're going to pull in by three dollars on everybody's water and sewer bill, which are already enormously high, probably the highest utility bills of any place around here? So if you want to lower the utility bills and take three dollars and put it for the storm sewer, but I think you're going to get a lot of flack on this. I'm sure Joe and I could afford three dollars, but there might be a lot of them in town that have a family of four and their utility bill is two hundred, two hundred and five, ten dollars, and you're going to add another three for something we should have been doing all along. So, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like a comment? Council discussion?
I, I, when this first came up, I recommended to Mr. Holmes that perhaps we, if we're going to do that, well, first of all, I said, what happened with the one point one million dollars that we have in our sewer fund? That's citizens' money, of course. And then I've got the explanation of it's going to different things, anyway. So I recommended that maybe we not do three dollars, but maybe we start off and then escalate it up as we get closer to the actual project, or, so I suggested a dollar, a dollar and a half. But, the more I think about it, the more I think that, and this goes to multi-units, am I correct on that? If you have multi-units, you pay three dollars per unit on your bill?
Yeah. Anybody, anybody has it? Get water.
So, people with multi-units, if you've got sixty units, you're paying an extra hundred eighty bucks. So, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's, I agree that the storm sewers need to be, but I also agree with what Stuart said about getting in and trying to clean them up first to see if we can achieve the problem before we start expecting the citizens to carry that load. So, that's all I got. Uh, so, that's all I got.
Any other council discussion?
Well, the, the way I understand it, in order for us to be able to do work, we have to have the council draw from. And the way I understand it, the city council, the city itself does not have a storm drain each fund. In the past somehow or other was, it was being done out of the sewer fund and, and other funds. The way I understand it, we can't take money from the sewer fund and put into the storm. So we have to start at some point to build up a fund where we can be able to clean out these sewers. That's my, that's why I've been asking along, can we clean them out, can we double check them? See which ones might be caved in? I believe Mr. Holmes is in the process to try and do a smoke test or something to inspect them. So that we can see where the problem is, so that we, we can, and we wanna start and get a funding going. So when we identify the problem, we can start to attack the problem.
How much are you gonna bring in at three dollars? People living on limited incomes, it's, yeah.
So, that's what I'm wondering.
So the, the.
Hold on, one second, please.
The, uh, the bill, creating the fund was, was actually for to build match money for grant opportunities. Wasn't for the upkeep or cleaning them out right now, it's, it's about creating the fund so we have some money that we can put up to, uh. Apply for some grants for storm sewer projects. Cause there are areas of the city that do not have storm sewers currently. Cause over the last thirty years, they've been removed as we've done projects. We have problems on, on Poplar alone, because where we continue to lay pavement, there's hardly any storm drains. The drains are pretty much covered up in certain areas. So we, we do have work that needs to be done to storm sewers. But it's not solely for just the upkeep and maintenance of it. Use your planning of it as well.
Can you use capital improvement funds to supplement a grant?
For match money, you mean? I mean.
I'm not gonna put Mr. Betts on the spot, but.
That would be a question for him, especially.
I brought this issue up a couple of years ago when the council came on board at that time, and it was totally ignored. So I brought it up again, Mr. Flowers Utility Committee took it up. We asked Mr. Betts to look and identify problem areas with the storm drain system. That has some of, how old is that storm drain system? It's collapsed in areas, it's gonna take a lot of money. And I believe you had said before that there's not much money out there for grants.
Storm sewer projects are the hardest projects to fund because you don't have a repayment source, like you do with a water fund, you know, a water project, you have. Brakes that you bring in, they can pay loan payments, um, same with the sewer with, uh, that you have limited street funds for street projects. Stormwater, you don't, you don't have that, uh, and there are a few less funding sources available for stormwater funds compared to water and sewer projects and road projects. So, that's part of the rationale as to why many, many communities are creating a stormwater fund.
So having a fund that collects, um, money for the purpose of maintaining the storm sewer from water customers. What makes us more, oh, excuse me, makes it more likely that we'll be able to secure loans and grants? Because we have, um, a, a way of either repaying the loan or matching the grant?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Betts, I don't think I'm on the spot, but do you have any sense of what comparable storm sewer surcharges, either in our area or for comparable size cities might be?
Well, I can, I don't know the exact amounts, I, I think it could be false information. I, I know, I live outside a little town junction city in Perry County, and I know they charge their residents the cost of it. I, I believe Logan's within five plus and ten range, I think, I think if you look on Lancaster's website, it'd be much higher than that.
Is it added to their utility bill?
I believe it's billed on the same bill, uh, just, just as a mechanism of billing.
So when we have a major flooding event, we receive, and we hear a lot of complaints of people having flooding in their homes. Attributed to the storm drain issue. And you're right, Mr. Brooks, it's been ignored for long, too long. Should've been addressed a long time ago. This council chose to take it on and address the issue. And it's not just cleaning out the debris. We have systems part of it that is collapsed. It's probably well over a hundred years old, it doesn't last forever. So it needs to be rebuilt. And that's what this ordinance addresses, is those areas will be identified and the project's done and completed.
So if a person has a hundred rentals, whatever they're gonna pay a hundred times three, right? Individual bill.
Yes.
Person, yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Powell.
Bear with me here, um, the, on the water bill, we pay our trash pick-up. And there's more money being charged for that on the water bill. Uh, I think it's the dollar or two dollars and something extra is being charged on the water bill. So we've already got that money sitting there, is there any way we can extract some of that money? Now, I know it's probably not a, it's a government thing, I understand, but, I mean, it's sitting there and I don't know what we've ever done with. That's, that, that's the biggest question, I don't know where, I've asked about it before and I've got, oh, we have fifty, fifty, fifty grand in there or something like that. You know, I don't think it's been fifty grand, I don't know what it was. But anyway, I, it, it's, it's still there. So I'm wondering if maybe we could, uh, take a look at what money we have in that extra. Because we are being overcharged for the, for the actual, what we pay happens hockey. And what we collect, there's a difference in a dollar and something or two dollars and something. And I think it was there because we're doing the billing, we're collecting the bill and then sending it to them, I believe that's how that went. But I was just wondering if maybe we could, if we, we, we need to do that, we could supplement with that and then only do a buck, you know, a buck and a half. But, and that's just a thought, I mean, probably not doable, but, uh, government works in a different way than my brain.
So as chairman of utility committee, when you discussed this, what did you recommend?
Dollar and a half.
Dollar and a half?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't make it out of committee at three then, we had a vote on it, I was there. You voted yes. Well, well, not you, Mr. Flowers.
So what does that mean?
You voted yes to the three dollars in committee, that's how we got it out.
To the council, to take it to the council.
I was just wanting, I was making sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, what I'm saying.
All right.
I voted to take it to the council, it's the council one.
I just wanted.
That's all I know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else like to, uh, address this?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if we pay three dollars each one of those, how are you gonna keep them clean? What are you gonna do different to avoid what's happening now?
This is not only to address that issue, but to rebuild the system that needs it. Again, when we have a major flooding event, we hear a lot of citizens talk about flooding in their basements. And some of that is due to the collapse, the age of the system. So the system needs to re, rebuild, no different than what we're doing with all the, and Mr. Holmes is gonna address this shortly. The projects we've been working on, on replacing water lines. We would go out and replace water lines, a month later, another section would break. We are actually going in and replacing water lines. Mr. Holmes will address that here shortly. This is the same scenario with the storm drain, it's not, it's something you don't see, it's under the ground. But it has to be addressed. And it should've been a long time ago. This council has chose to take it on, address it, and try to remedy it. And if there are clogged drains, the city should be notified of it. The city doesn't necessarily know that there's a clogged storm drain on Main Street. You know, and I'm driving around specifically looking for, is the storm drain plugged? If they see it, they should act upon it, but.
So, do you think that the whole town is, I'm asking because I know that they put a new one in there by me. So I don't know.
They didn't, they didn't put a new one by you, they rebuilt the entrance of that. So what's underground away from the entrance is what needs to rebuild and address.
I'm guessing you probably still have some flooding though, when it does rain really hard, cause just down.
They did what, he needs to talk to them.
Okay, cause a block from you, we do have some flooding, which probably means there's probably a clog potentially, maybe not right on the drain where you can see it. But somewhere down in the pipe somewhere. So, and that may not be something we can get with the shop with the Vaptr. So maybe a clogged, a storm drain that collapsed.
And, and it may seem like a trivial thing, but I would ask numerous times over the years, when people mow their yard, don't put the grass out in the, in the street in the gutter.
It's actually an ordinance.
Uh, you still see it all the time, that contributes to the issue.
Well, there's a lot of things that you can see on the road, and when we get rain, it does get, and I know, and I do. People don't clean up where they're.
We have an ordinance for the grass over the street.
We do, but, but if, if it's not reported, the city doesn't necessarily know, so.
I mean, when you blow it out there, it dries up in two days, you don't really see it, but it still contributes to the problem.
You're looking at me?
Yeah, well, I mean, you're addressing me, I guess, directly.
Yes, you mentioned Poplar Street, and I know where the new part of Poplar. Clear down below, um, two seventy. Yeah. Um.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. That does flood now? But did, is that a result of a contractor covering one up?
Uh, there was no storm drain in the scope of that project. So I don't know if there was a storm drain there originally, I don't believe that there was, I know it's just a low area in the city. But when they paved it, um, I don't know, maybe Mr. Betts, I know he was more involved in some of the projects, but I don't know, Chestnut there, at the far end of Chestnut. Where it's paved now, do you recall if there was any storm drains down there at all?
Not in front of the pizza place?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't believe there was, there is one. Uh, just, you know, down at the apartment, so I was just down there last week looking with Jason. But it, it doesn't have enough drains in that area, in fact, one of the first ordinances or second that I'm gonna, if I answer any questions about them, um, we're gonna talk about that. It, it's for that area, uh, it's an insufficient number of drains.
And that is a safety hazard because a lot of people come off of Canal Street. At thirty-five miles an hour, and if there's water there, there's potential for hydroplanning, it's been, it's been a complaint for, by a lot of people that live down on that end of town. But.
I was just hoping we could blame a contractor, they could come in and.
Didn't work with Jefferson Street though either, so, yeah.
This, this is a neglect of the system for years, years, a long time. And Mr. Betts has looked into Chestnut Street. I think people are gonna be shocked when they hear the number, the dollar number, to totally redo Chestnut. To do the water, the sewer, the storm drain and pave it. It's gonna be unbelievable what that, that number is gonna be, and I think you've initially looked at Chestnut Street.
Yes, um, to just, you know, just scratching the surface of it.
Exactly.
And part of our sewer project, uh, that's under design, but, uh, it's not going to construction, we're, we're gonna investigate the sanitary, uh, sanitary sewer first. Hopefully it's, uh, in condition that where it can be lined without digging up all of Chestnut like we had on the south end during the phase one project, I'm sorry, east end. Because we've seen what a, it was just a inconvenient project that was for the public and the disruption it caused, so. We're hoping that a trenchless, uh, repair of the sewers, uh, without digging up the street will, will supply some of this areas, but, uh, it, it needs a lot of work.
That, uh, I sat in on a, uh, council meeting in Lovin', and they had what you talked about, they ran down, inflated it.
Yeah.
Into the, into the, uh, sewer, I think it was, and, uh, and did a repair, that went.
Yep, sewer line cut.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Uh, any other council discussion? I know this is a, a tough ordinance, and I appreciate the interaction, we seem to discuss it pretty well. With that, I think it's time to call the roll.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Henderson?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Yes. Ordnance fifty-one twenty-five passes. Okay, first reading, um. Ordnance fifty-five twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance amending a twenty twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas the twenty twenty-five appropriations needed to be amended. Whereas appropriations of eleven thousand dollars to street construction fund two zero zero dash one five zero dash five zero zero one three. Street construction fuel is necessary. Whereas appropriations of five hundred dollars to street construction fund two zero zero dash one five zero dash one zero zero six six. Street construction foul weather gear is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to reappropriate from previously appropriated funds to the following funds. Appropriations in the sum of nine thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the street construction fund. Item, line item two one zero dash one six zero dash four zero zero one zero. Highway operating supplies to street construction fund line item two zero zero dash one five zero dash five zero zero one three. Street construction fuel. Appropriations in the sum of two thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the street construction fund. Line item two three zero dash one eight zero dash five zero zero one three. Street levy office supplies to street construction fund line item two zero zero dash one five zero dash five zero zero one three. Street construction fuel. Appropriations in the sum of five hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the street levy fund. Line item two three zero dash one eight zero dash two one three zero zero. Street levy education to street construction fund line item two zero zero dash one five zero dash one zero zero six six. Street construction foul weather gear. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. Unappropriated balance in the street construction fund line item two one zero dash one six zero dash one zero zero. One, I'm sorry, four zero zero one zero, highway operating supply. Street construction fund line item two three zero dash one eight zero dash five zero zero one three. Street levy office supply. And street levy fund line item two three zero dash one eight zero dash two one three zero zero. Street levy education are decreased by the respective amounts specified herein. Total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to commit changes to the city's significative resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point one one of the Nelsonville City Charter. As this ordinance provides for appropriate, appropriate expenses. Truly enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-seventh day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
And this is the first reading, uh, but is there any council discussion?
I have a question, um, about section two where it says, the total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. Um, but all of these transactions are to reappropriate previously appropriated funds. So there's no, is there any effect on the total unappropriated balance?
Um, so, the way I compare this.
the way I prepare is per the auditor's instructions, just to read paragraphs two and three. Um, in ten, like technically there's no unappropriated balance that's being increased because of paragraph three. It's just, yeah. I'm not wedded to keeping that in there. I just cut that in there just because it's always in the appropriation moments. Um, if it, I don't think, because both paragraphs two and three are there, I don't think there's a problem with the change in meaning, but council would prefer to have it written differently for clarity purposes, of course, I would.
This is money coming from an existing fund where it's been appropriated to another line item, which we need the money in that line item. So, yeah, I think it's. All right, I'm okay.
Yeah. Whatever, whatever council wants me to do, I can take it in even though.
Can I ask a question? You're moving it within the same fund to one line item to another?
You know, some of them are being moved from different, um, different funds and line items.
Yeah, there's one, two of them are moving from moving from one line item to another within the street construction fund. And then the third one is moving from the street levy fund to the street construction fund.
If you're moving from line item to line item within the same fund, you do not need to do an appropriation ordinance. You're allowed to do that because you have not approved the budget by line item. You re- you approve a total budget. So from line item to line item within the same fund does not require an appropriation ordinance.
Right. Yeah, but all these are cross-fund appropriations.
Not according to what she just read.
They are.
Um, I mean, I'm looking at A where it says appropriations in the sum of nine thousand dollars from the appropriated balance of the street construction fund. Line item numbered.
So that should say the highway, that isn't street, that shouldn't, so that is a not written correctly.
Oh.
So, uh, yeah, so it's, it's going to street construction fund two hundred. It's coming from the two-ten fund, which is.
Highway operating.
Highway operations. Um, so good catch, but it, they are all cross-fund, um, two-ten to two-hundred, two-thirty to two-hundred and two-thirty to two-hundred.
Okay.
Actually, you can do that without appropriation.
Oh, really? Uh, I, when I saw advice, I was told that it needed to get council, so that's why we're here.
So this, um, puts a level of transparency on what's going on here, yeah.
We, we'd like transparency.
No, no, yes, we don't.
No.
Yeah, but you don't, nobody knows what line item is line item.
That's what we're discussing as this ordinance.
So then one B where it says from the balance of the street construction fund line item going, street levy office supplies to the street construction fund line item, should it be the, should the first one instead of street construction fund say street levy fund?
So, no, money's in the street levy office supplies fund. It's going to street construction to the street construction fuel fund.
But it says the street construction fund here and there.
The wording is the same in the previous, which Mr. Smith might have pointed out that it might have been.
Error. So I'm asking if a similar error was moving B.
Correct.
Okay, what should it say?
Also be in C, the street levy fund that's first mentioned.
Um, well, what should B say then?
Nothing. It should just be appropriation and so B would be appropriations in the sum of two thousand dollars from the appropriated balance of line item two three zero.
Got it.
Same in B, same in C.
Okay, and then A as well, like the appropriated balance of line item two one zero, et cetera, for highway operating? Okay. We need, don't need the fund name, I would need the one.
Correct. Why don't, why don't, if we have a motion to correct it, I, this time I could send you the updated one so you don't have to worry about. I can make all the changes throughout.
So I make a motion to, um, correct some of the language prior to the second reading on September twenty-second.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson?
Uh huh.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Tack?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes, Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance for first reading, uh, fifty-six twenty-four, if someone would like to introduce it. Don't introduce it.
And ordinance approving change order one for Nelsonville Regional Collection Systems Improvement Phase Four project and returning emergency services. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into the contract for the Nelsonville Regional Collection System Improvement Phase Four project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended to help state project contractors for numerous unknown conditions encountered during the project. Whereas the numerous unknown conditions encountered includes remove and replace a varied storm sewer structure, a lateral repair at five thirty-six Borough Boulevard, stop street reconnections, additional tree removal, watertight lids, stump removal and final adjustments of installed quantity. Whereas this will be change order one for the project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by ninety-three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars forty-nine cents. Whereas the funds to cover the increase shall be drawn from the contingency portion of the project funding in which there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby approves change order one for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Systems Improvement improvements Phase Four project as described more particularly in exhibit A, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as it fully rewritten within. The contract price shall be increased by some ninety-three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars forty-nine cents to address remove and replacement of varied storm sewer structures, a lateral repair at five thirty-six Borough Boulevard, stop street reconnections, additional tree removal, watertight lids, stump removal and final adjustment of installed quantity. City manager ha- shall have authority to enter into and accept, and will authorize change order one for the project. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was enacted in meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council, thirty-two to the seven, with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to URC seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. By members of council voting to declare an emergency, this ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to URC seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the change order must be approved immediately to ensure timely and efficient completion of Phase Four sewer project, which project is necessary to the provision of public utilities within the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, walls or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules?
So, yes. Very good.
Any council discussion on suspension? What call the roll on the suspension?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Uh, motion to, uh, so move.
Very good.
Any citizens comment? Council discussion?
Mr. Ho? Do you, do you back up this?
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah. Any other discussions?
I think it's important to remember that the funds to cover the increase are going to be drawn from the contingency portion of the project funding where there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. So all that number is very large. Um, there are sufficient funds to cover it.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion?
Um. Well, once, if nobody has anything else to discuss about this, um, I move to, uh, can I make a motion to instruct the court to correct the spelling of contingency in that last word as clause?
So, um, you're making a motion?
Um, oh, do we already know? I'm so sorry. Um, I guess as a matter of discussion, the word contingency is spelled wrong.
I think our lawyers are okay. We just point them out. I think we can.
Okay.
Because it's, it's not, it's a spelling, a spelling, it's not a
or anything.
It's not a light procedural, correct, correct. Okay, that was my fault.
All right, um, what call the roll?
Mr. Coman?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Tack?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-six twenty-five passes. Ordinance fifty-seven twenty-four, would someone like to introduce it? Don't introduce it.
And ordinance approving a professional services agreement with DLC for professional services related to Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Four and authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement. Whereas it is necessary for the city to enter into a professional services agreement and to engage professional services associated with the planning, design, bidding and construction services for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Four to replace water lines along portions of Pine Grove, Rover, Oak, Elizabeth, College, Clinton, Ashton, Harper, High, Walnut and Second Street along with Pearl Boulevard. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero eight employs, I'm sorry, empowers council to provide for the employment of engineering and other professional services on a consulting basis where being necessary. Whereas DLC has agreed to provide the professional services for a lump sum fee not to exceed two hundred seventy thousand one hundred dollars and the city cannot pay a design loan from the EPA to cover the expense until the project can move forward to construction. Whereas the city completed a qualification based selection process in November two thousand twenty-one for as needed engineering services that include water projects in order to satisf- satisfy the procurement requirements for projects exceeding seventy-five thousand dollars in total fee. Whereas on September second, two thousand twenty-five, the utility committee voted to recommend to council that the city engage DLC for the Phase Four water project. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city for the city to engage DLC to provide the professional services for the fee to which DLC has agreed. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby approves the professional services agreement attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit A for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Four project. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute the professional services agreement on behalf of the city. Accordingly, the city hereby engages DLC for the professional services to be rendered including planning, design, bidding and construction services for the Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Four to replace water lines along portions of Pine Grove, Rover, Oak, Elizabeth College, Clinton, Ashton, Harper, High, Walnut and Second Street along with Pearl Boulevard. The city shall pay up to two hundred seventy thousand one hundred dollars to provide the professional services. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as authorizing any expenditure funds or as appropriating any expenditure funds other than as specifically expressly au- authorized or appropriated herein. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect as the release plan permitted by law. Truly enacted by council on second reading, twenty-second day of September two thousand twenty-five.
And this is the first reading, but is there any council discussion on this?
I just have a question for, uh, Mr. Betts. Um, by any chance, the scope of this project will also address the flow issue that we have on Pine Grove?
Well, so you'll have, uh, it, it does include water line upgrades on Pine Grove. I think the, I think it's a two to four inch line at the right now, uh, two inch. This will provide a six inch water main with fire hydrants. The residual pressure will be better when water's being used, but static pressure, you know, uh, when no water's flowing, that's what's called static, will be the same and there won't be a pressure increase, but they'll have better sustained pressure.
Thank you. Okay, any other council discussion? All right, thank you, sir. Ordinance fifty-eight twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance approving a professional services agreement with DLC for professional services related to Nelsonville Phase One Storm Sewer Improvement and authorizing the stage right here to the professional services agreement. Whereas it is necessary for the city to enter into a professional services agreement and to engage professional services associated with the planning, design, bidding and construction services for the Nelsonville Phase One Storm Sewer Improvement to upgrade the storm sewers along portions of Papa, Chestnut and Washington Street. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero eight, empowers council to provide for the employment of engineering and other professional services on a consulting basis where being necessary. Whereas DLC has agreed to provide the professional services for a lump sum fee not to exceed twenty-seven thousand eight hundred thou- eight hundred eighty dollars. Whereas the city intends to apply for a five hundred thousand dollar critical infrastructure agreement and the total project cost is five hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. And HACCAP recommends completing the project design prior to the grant application deadline in two thousand twenty-six. So, so the project is ready to proceed. Whereas the city completed the qualification based selection process in November two thousand twenty-one for as needed engineering services that included water projects in order to satisfy the procurement requirements for projects exceeding seventy-five thousand dollars in total fee. Whereas on September second, two thousand twenty-five, the utility committee voted to recommend to council that the city engage DLC for the Phase One Storm Sewer Project. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city for, for the city to engage DLC to provide the professional services for the fee to which DLC has agreed. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby approves the professional services agreement attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit A for the Nelsonville Phase One Storm Sewer Improvement Project. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute the professional services agreement on behalf of the city. Accordingly, the city hereby engages DLC for the professional services to be rendered including planning, design, bidding and construction services for the Nelsonville Phase One Storm Sewer Improvements to upgrade the storm sewers along portions of Papa and Chestnut and Washington Street. The city shall pay DLC up to twenty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars to provide the professional services. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as authorizing any expenditure funds or as appropriating any expenditure funds other than as specifically and expressly authorized or appropriated herein. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Truly enacted by council on second reading, the twenty-second day of September two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, this is the first reading. Uh, is there any council discussion? Okay. Um, resolution twenty-three fifty-three, if someone would like to introduce it. Don't introduce it. Sorry, no, there you go.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
The resolution ratifying the city attorney's engagement of revenue company LPA to represent the city in Ohio Supreme Court case number two zero two five dash one zero six one. Whereas by ordinance ninety-three twenty-four, council has confirmed.
Whereas by ordinance ninety-two twenty-four, council has confirmed the acting city manager's appointment of a city attorney for attorney ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas ordinance ninety-two twenty-four authorized the city to enter into a contract with the city attorney, and the contract specified certain authorities of the city attorney. Whereas one of the authorities given to the city attorney, including the authority to agree with outside legal counsel for obtaining and or retaining legal services that the city attorney in his expression, but subject to approval by council, may from time to time be inappropriate for the city. Whereas council previously approved the city attorney's retention on behalf of the city of Remiger Company LPA for general legal consultation and litigation, including for the matter of the Ohio Supreme Court Case Number two zero two five dash one zero six one. Whereas out of abundance of caution, council needs it necessary to formally and specifically ratify the approval of Remiger Company LPA specifically for the litigation matter of Ohio Supreme Court Case Number two zero two five dash one zero six one. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city attorney's agreement with Remiger Company LPA to represent the city in the litigation matter of Ohio Supreme Court Case Number two zero two five dash one zero six one is hereby ratified and deemed approved as of the first date of the city attorney's agreement with Remiger Company LPA. Council shall by separate legislation authorize any proper expenditure of money for Remiger Company LPA representation of the city. This resolution shall be enforceable to effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Truly adopted by council on first reading May eighth of September two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt.
So move.
Assistant's comments. Council discussion? Court call the roll, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pet?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, or twenty-three fifty-three passes.
A question, can I ask a question, please?
We're past it, but go ahead, please.
The cost of that. That group. I missed it.
There was no cost in here.
Oh, there's no cost. That's good.
That doesn't mean it's free.
It's not missing that.
Okay. Resolution twenty-three fifty-four, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it. Second.
A resolution waiving competitive bidding for the maintenance and repair of the Nelsonville Fountain. Whereas ordinance eighty dash twenty-four specifies the circumstances under which competitive bidding shall be provided and the circumstances under which competitive bidding may be waived by council. Whereas Robinson Iron has previously carried out work on the Nelsonville Fountain and is willing and able to perform necessary maintenance and restoration work on the fountain. Whereas Robinson Iron is qualified to perform such work, and the city manager recommends to council that the city engage Robinson Iron to perform such work on the Nelsonville Fountain. Whereas council finds Robinson Iron possesses possesses specialized qualifications to perform such work, and it is in the best interest of the city to engage whoever possesses the best specialized qualifications to perform such work. Whereas Robinson Iron has quoted the city a price of one hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to perform such work on the Nelsonville Fountain. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby attends, I'm sorry, council hereby exempts a contract for Nelsonville Fountain maintenance and restoration from the competitive bidding requirements. The city manager is directed and authorized to enter into an agreement with Robinson Iron for the maintenance and restoration of the Nelsonville Fountain, provided the cost for the city shall not exceed one hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Funds for the maintenance and restoration of the Nelsonville Fountain shall be paid out of the Betty Johnson Fund. Whereas council finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be enforceable to effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Truly adopted by council on first reading the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, motion to adopt. So move. Second. Assistant's comments.
I just have a question. You want to take it, so where?
Oh, no, hold on.
I'm sorry, it's hearing.
You're fine. Go ahead.
I'm just curious, do they have to take it? For another row of speech?
Uh, Mr. Holmes would have to address that.
Yes, their, their location is in Alabama. They did the same thing, I think, back in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, when they worked off the first. They've, they've worked on this fountain before.
What is it that they have to do to?
Well, you're missing two of the, two of the, uh, gates or two of the, uh,
railing.
railing.
So.
It has to be sandblasted, repainted, and they're also going to make some other changes that, uh, Steve Cox and Jane Harmony, if, if, we all, we all discussed it together.
And recasting the, the. If I understood, they're recasting the, the gates that go around, around the fountain because they're, they're so deteriorated, they can't sandblast it and just repaint them because they just go down almost nothing. So they're going to recast the iron around the fountain. Which they can't do on site.
Oh, okay, that's what I was going to ask. I don't understand why someone couldn't do it here, so.
I missed the amount, one hundred and twenty-five?
Hundred and twenty-nine nine.
What?
One hundred twenty-nine nine.
So one hundred and thirty thousand. Where are you taking that from?
Betty Johnson Fund.
Where?
The Betty Johnson Fund.
It's not working.
Right, right here on number three.
Any other assistant's comments?
For what it's worth, this is a great, this is a great project. The Bear Foundation, you know, for many, many, many years have taken this fountain and kept it up. Back in the day, the city had did keep it up, painting and even maintaining, but it got, back in nineteen seventy-four, the Bear Foundation went after this fountain to redo it. And it's time now to have it redone. It's such a local point, but I'm just saying they have maintained it for all those years. They put on all new electric in, no expense to the to the city. They put all the plumbing in, no expense to the city, and so on and so forth. So I think knowing Betty Johnson and that family, this is exactly what that money was, was earmarked to do. I think now it's time for the city to, to step up and to go forward with this project because the Bear Foundation has done such a wonderful job for this community. For what it's worth.
Thank you.
So again.
Any council discussion?
My understanding is that's what Betty Johnson left this money for.
She meant.
Is to beautify or beautification of the city projects that need done. My question is probably the amount of money. Um, but I don't have no say so on that.
Okay, court call the roll, please.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Pet?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three fifty-four passed. Resolution twenty-three fifty-five, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
There's only one more.
There's only one more.
A resolution instructing the city manager to indicate to Rumpke the city's interest in treating the leachate from the Athens Hocking landfill in the city's wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the city's engineer recommends the city treat the leachate from the Athens Hocking landfill at the city's new wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the utility committee voted on September second, two thousand twenty-five to recommend to council that the city manager be instructed to communicate the city's interest to Rumpke, the owner of the Athens Hocking landfill. Whereas council finds it necessary and appropriate and in the best interest of the city to instruct the city manager to communicate the city's interest to Rumpke. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City council hereby instructs the city manager to communicate with Rumpke the owner of the Athens County Athens Hocking landfill, the city's interest in treating the leachate from the Athens Hocking landfill at the city's new wastewater treatment plant. Council finds this resolution was adopted at a meeting open to the public as required by, under applicable law. This resolution shall be enforceable to effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Truly adopted by council on first reading the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five.
Uh, motion to adopt?
So move.
Second. Any assistant's comment? Council discussion?
Did, did we talk about the methane? Is there a buildup of methane in the? It's ammonia?
Yeah.
We said ammonia.
What's so funny?
You said that before.
Oh, I'm saying it again.
It's okay.
And I may say it again.
And I didn't hear you.
Well.
Must be too much THC in the water.
Can't drink us water.
So it, it's, it's ammonia.
Ammonia.
And is that what we talked about? Is that what we're talking about, having a valve that we can shut off in that building?
Well, yes, we haven't got to any logistics. Like, I can give you equipment real quick. We had a kickoff meeting with folks on campus, just introductions, come up, see our facility, meet us and talk. And we did that. And basically, I was including myself, the service director, and the plant operator. And the consensus was that we should recommend the city to, you know, take the discussions further. That's as far as we've got. But one of the things we've discussed was, we're the contaminants, and that typically ammonia and VOV are, depending on what you find in your wastewater. You have a limit to discharge that into the river. It's twelve milligrams per liter for ammonia and one milligram per liter for ammonia. VOV and, I'm sorry. So the discussion is that it is fairly concentrated coming out of landfill, but by the time it gets through your collection system, being discharged around scenic lane, it will have gone through your three pump stations and mixed with all the city's sewage before it gets there. Just to give you the numbers, currently they generate twenty to thirty thousand gallons per day of leachate. And that's expected to increase over time to fifty or sixty, which are long-term plans. Uh, the city's treatment facility is designed to handle one point two million gallons. And currently, you're, they're averaging six hundred fifty, seven hundred thousand down there. So just a little over half capacity is what they're averaging. So I think I did the math somewhere. It's four percent is what they're be contributing. So you can imagine the dilution.
Got it.
That's, it's about the end of my, uh.
Any other council discussion? Thank you, Michael. So this kind of ties back into the storm drain issue. Uh, we have identified where storm drain water is still going into the sewer collection, correct?
Well, I believe it's safe to, there have been places that's been identified, but I think there's a lot of sources that it's, we don't know the location, but we know it's there. Meaning, um, yes, you get six hundred and fifty thousand gallons on a, on a normal day, but on the days where we're getting two inches of rain, you're probably, I know Sean's told me it's been up above one point two to one point five million. So there's evidence that it's there. We just don't know the exact location, so if you're running, then that's, that's hard to find because.
Exactly.
Of course.
So my point is by up, upgrading the storm drainage system, we can identify the areas potentially where that is leaching into the, uh, sewer.
It's certainly going to help, uh, hopefully identify cross connections, or storm drains might be tied in and get those out of this.
So it all ties intogether.
And when you're doing, we call it I and I, info infiltration, when you're doing I and I projects to get clean water out, uh, oftentimes the struggle is where you send it, that you need the storm sewer system to send it.
And the EPA will be monitoring everything that comes out of the landfill.
The landfill is already fully monitored, uh, by the EPA, and that will continue. They actually have to approve this hat, uh, basically the, the letter that's before you is to provide permission to the administration and everybody just, you know, at this early point, and everybody's on board with technical discussion. And right now, the city of Logan Treats, they're, they're actually trucking up there.
You say we use them other two?
Okay.
Well, I thought she's completely.
Now, until the, prior to the new plant coming online, the old facility was over capacity with this flow, so there's never that opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Any other council discussion? Court call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three fifty-five passes. I can take a verdict. Uh, city managers report, Mr. Holmes.
I've already given you a, a pretty much of an update on the fountain. Uh, we did meet with Luke Robinson, Luke Cox, Jane Harmony, and Mike Vieira?
Freer.
Freer.
Mike Freer.
Mike Freer. Lives on a wonderful job of maintaining the fountain. We talked about ways on how we could make it more easily be maintained. So, uh, everybody left that meeting with a very good feeling. I'm very confident that Robinson Iron will do a great job. Also, when that is finished, we will be placing a plaque honoring Betty Johnson for her generous contribution to the beautification of Nelsonville. Um, I want to bring you an update on the door application. If you're not familiar with the door, it's designated outdoor refreshment area. Area or something, yeah, area. That application has been completed, and I will submit it to council on September twenty-second. I've visited all of the businesses. Uh, there are three decals that have to be decided on. One is door sold here, which would be facilities that have liquor license. One is door of welcome here, which would be places that don't sell liquor, but don't mind the people coming in. And then door not welcome here. And that would be places like the post office, library, the Heinz, law offices, those kinds of things. But every business made that determination. I did not make that determination for them. All I explained to them is what it was. I showed them the map. Once I submitted to city council, it has to be posted in newspaper for two weeks. Um, or two separate occasions within a two-week period. The city council cannot approve it prior to thirty days, and it can't take longer than sixty days. So if I submit it to twenty-second, I would assume it was part of the, uh, proof. You're probably pretty close.
Probably.
First year, first part of, first part of December. I was actually first council meeting in December. That, that runs seven days a week from noon until eleven o'clock at night. Uh, the city council can repeal that under certain circumstances, for instance, free of the hills and on alcoholic events. You can suspend it for up to seven days. So, um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're a little late to the party. Uh, everyone else around us has had it. Uh, there doesn't appear to be any issues. Chief Oliver did put in that the chief of police, the fire chief, and myself will meet at least once a month for the first six months to address any potential issues. So.
And police presence will be there.
That will be it, yeah. Now, we, we have to order, uh, cup that says dump of those aura. Um, and, uh, I'll be ordering that and also finding event info to be.
Is that the way it's done, like in Athens, the motion?
The one catcher?
Sticker, yeah.
Yeah. Now, they have individual cups identifying that.
Who am I talking?
Um, I checked with, uh, we had a short conversation the other day, and the city can buy those and sell them, and we can make a profit. For instance, we could buy them and, um, I have no idea how much they are, but we could put in their core dime on it. and put that toward the administration. It probably makes more sense than like the chamber doing it because they don't have a facility or any employees where we do, but we'd have to provide receipts and, you know, keep everything that has to be a special fund created. So I was frightened going that direction, but that can be, we can talk about that more on the, uh, September twenty-second. Do you have any questions about the door? I, um, I think Justin Booth and Nick Smith are the ones that started, am I correct? And I think they did an excellent job and, uh, I had no idea when he directed me to do it, my question was what's the door? And so I read it five times over and I looked at it and I thought, we can do this. This is not, you know, we, we really can't. And I had a lot of causes common from, uh, facilities that have liquor license and, uh, how this is going to be a real benefit, uh, it could be a real benefit. Are there any questions about the door?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
When I first heard it, I thought, put me in mind of alcohol, Cedar Point alcohol. What was the purpose of this and what is Dora going to look like on the street? What will Dora look like on the street?
The boundaries of the door, there'll be signs that say no alcohol allowed past.
Oh, yeah.
Just give me examples. When I was city manager the first time, they talked about Stewart's Opera House serving alcohol outside.
Inside, yes.
They didn't know they were talking about serving it on the side.
Oh, on the sidewalk.
In order to do that, they would have had to fence that area around. The mine would have done a similar thing and also Rhapsody would have to do the similar thing. I apologize for not bringing it with me tonight, uh, but the boundaries of the door will allow you to walk anywhere within those, those boundaries.
I understand it.
Yeah. So, uh, we, I've checked with some of the other communities and said, problem. So.
What's the residents here? You shouldn't they have a say in it? All of them, the whole town shouldn't they have a say in open containers on the street?
Well, that's, that's resident, I think it's a great idea.
Well, that is the purpose of the, why it has to sit to, it has, when, when it is presented and council adopts it, it has to sit for that purpose in case there's any.
What's going to happen in that purpose and what, when it's sitting, what's going to happen?
Well, if it's for public notice in case there's another.
How will they address it? How will the public address that?
Either come to council or address it with the city manager.
Once it appears in paper, at the next meeting, the residents in common, if they're, they're either supported or turned for. But that's the exact purpose of putting it in the paper, so that everybody is aware of it.
Um, Mr. Smith? Could you tell us anything about what the public conversation was like when you started this?
There, there was no real public conversation.
With access, I wouldn't.
Well, we just never got to the public notice stage, so.
Okay, hold on, one person at a time, please. Mr. Smith, I believe you have the poll.
Oh, I was, I mean, I was mostly done. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, in addition, the maps should also be posted here at city hall so people can come and review them and, and then, yeah, if they have issues, they should talk to their council members and, and let people know.
Maybe you can print some of those maps off and set them on that counter out there. And if you want to stop by and pick up a map and look at where your location is.
Or just put it on the city of Nelsonville Facebook page.
Yeah.
A lot of people spend a lot of time on Facebook, so they should see it.
So what you're saying is like, okay, there's going to be spots that is, there'll be alcohol. Like you said, it might be fenced off. So what are the others? There's three, right?
With it, they, the, it includes Diamond Dome, includes the train that serves alcohol on the train, includes Rocky, which I think.
Service beer.
It will include, these are the places that are authorized sellers.
Yeah.
Okay. It would include the mine, Rhapsody and Stewart's Opera House. Uh, for instance, uh, Fulbrook Cafe does not sell, sell alcohol. But they would have it as, or I've already checked with them, they don't have a decal on their door that says Dora, uh, welcome. So if someone got a, uh, a glass, a Dora glass from the mine, they'd be able to walk into, into the, into the Fulbrook. Now, we don't want people going into the hive. You know, so that's Dora not welcome. Okay, so.
That means no alcohol.
No alcohol, yeah.
Will the traffic be shut off, friend? Friend, will the traffic be shut off? There'll still be traffic.
Yeah, there'll still be traffic, yeah.
Depends on the event, I would imagine.
Yeah, well, yeah, they have blocked up for, you know.
So will people be walking the streets with alcohol?
That's right.
Inside the, the border of the door, they gotta stay inside the, the front.
Is that just the square?
No, that goes from, which I brought on the map, it goes from Rocky over.
I'm concerned about, I live four houses from the square.
You're not included.
They let you out.
Did you want to be included?
I want a non-Dora.
You can't, we can't go to your house. I can't see, you'll have to serve me at your house.
And this is, Dora's not a, not just typically Dora in other cities right now is not just any day of the week, grab a cup and go. It's typically, and you get a cup, you get a date on it, it's typically surrounding an event. So if you've ever been to Lancaster downtown, they've got barricades, they block off a square. You can walk around the downtown area, they have live music. That's typically what it is. So if, it's not as if just like on a Sunday, let's stroll and drink alcohol around the square. It's typically not, that's typically not how it is. It's typically surrounding an event and, but you need the Dora to be, in order to be able to do that for the event. So if somebody has, so it's like, for instance, somebody mentioned the smoked meat festival during the last meeting. When that event was occurring, that would have been in the Dora parameters and it could have, they could have had, that could have enhanced that event potentially, right? But it wasn't around or available at that time. So it would just be typically around, surrounding an event. It's not just like a Saturday afternoon and everybody just stumbling and carrying alcohol around. It's not.
So how long will this go? One day?
It's on the event.
Well, it depends on what the city, what is approved and what the city does with it because some cities like Worcester, I believe, it's, it might be all year round, but some places like Athens, it's only during certain months of the year.
Only summer months. Boogie on the Brex is a Dora event.
Okay.
Car show would be the event.
Dora event. They're clear cups that have a date specific on it, so you can't just bring that cup the next day and re, and use it. You, you get, you have to get a cup each day there for your event.
Why don't you come to the twenty-second meeting?
Like is it one day, two days, three?
Depends on your event. So if you got a car show for one day, it's a one day.
Okay. Is this how it works? Is it, is it strictly event based?
Right now, it's every day, it's three hundred and sixty-five days. So if the council wants to change that, uh, you can. But that's the way it's written right now, so. I, if the next council meeting, I'll give everyone an application and you can read it. And then it's got to be put in the paper and we'll also put it on the, uh,
Facebook.
Facebook and, uh, in the city.
Website.
Website, yeah.
I, I think, I think if you started it out as more an event based and when they had the final Friday, that could have been an event based. You know, where, when you did it on that final Friday of each month during the summertime. I think it's a good test, test the waters to see if it's an issue. You know, I don't, I don't know, every day is something that would be.
Wait, I'm not advocating, I'm just telling you what I have written.
Yeah.
So what, so.
Okay, so at this point, this is just a discussion. We'll have the official, uh, ordinance soon. And we can expand upon the discussion.
Right, you, and, uh, that time or in the following week, you can amend, change or.
Maybe we can bring it to the next committee meeting. We should have committee meetings before the next meeting, right? So we can talk about implementing developments at that point.
Okay. All right, so, uh, but that, go ahead and continue.
All right, thank you. A few weeks ago, I, um, met with, um, Michael Betts and with, uh, Councilman Taylor and Taylor Sappington to go over some future projects that we had. And, uh, so at the beginning of that meeting, you have to understand, in May first, I was just kind of dropped in this position. So a couple of days later, I was informed that we're having an update on phase two or phase three water and I'm supposed to sign here and here, you're, you're familiar with that, aren't you, Joe? Yeah. And I did, what good little city manager do. But elementary math tells me that if we have a phase four, then obviously there was a phase three, a phase two and a phase one. Common, common, this would say that, right? So before we started the meeting, I got my iPad out and I said, okay, let's, let's start with water. Tell me what phase one water was. And I said, when you do that, give me a year. So we had phase one water, phase two water, phase three water, phase four. There's another north river crossing and we went to sewer project. Phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. So when we got it all done, I sent that to Mr. Betts. And, uh, and I said, do me a favor. I said, put a dollar amount on that. So I have copies here, I've given to all the council members and if anybody in the public is interested, I, I've got several extra copies. We start in twenty eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. We're talking eight years. Anybody want to, anybody want to venture guess? How much is the city's invested in eight years?
I don't know, fifty million.
Fifty-nine million dollars. That's a lot of money, people. Okay? I thought that, I'm sorry, but that's a lot of money. Also, and I'm going to bring that to your attention. In those eight years, we were under the charter form of government. Also in that eight years, we probably went through a half a dozen city managers. And also had to deal with numerous lawsuits. So when people get on and they say that we're wasting our taxpayers' money on lawsuits and we have, and our infrastructure is falling apart, that absolutely is not true. Now, I've already given a copy to Tom Williams because I know this is going to be a topic the next couple of days, but I said, Tom, here's a copy. You know? So that's my report on that. And why do I want to know that? Because when I'm signing those things, like all those little city managers are supposed to do, I better know what's going on. And I know what's going on now and I've given everyone of you a copy and you should know what's going on also.
Yeah, but that fifty million isn't out of residents' pocket. That fifty million is grant, a lot of it's grant money.
Absolutely. But who approved that grant money? Who approved those, those things? Do you want a copy of it? Would you like a copy?
Can I have a copy, sir?
Yeah.
I think, I think some of that money is for the sewers plant, right? Good thing. And that's, that's on a forty-year note into the city.
You're welcome, go ahead, too.
Is that correct?
There is a, fortunately that project was funded with a, uh, forty-year.
Yeah. And how much was that? You remember?
The project or the?
The, the, the note that, that our former city manager was, uh, had, uh, done is, uh, forty-year low interest or low interest.
It's low interest. I want to say the, approximately eleven million in grant and seven million.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And most, if not all that, was viewer pretend interest?
Yes, the USDA, when Mr. Flowers was referencing as an interest-bearing account, but a lot of the other through EPA, all the water projects, the sewer centers, many of those through EPA and sewer, were sewer centers.
Now, that does not include the project we just approved, does it?
Correct. Well, oh, I'm sorry, the, I think there were, it's a sewer penalty.
Don't do it, no, it's not. And finally, the update on the comprehensive plan. We're working on putting together a steering committee that I hope by the next, uh, city council meeting, I'll have all the members of the steering committee and we'll also be working on the, uh, agenda. Uh, any other questions for me?
Yes, I have one. I typically ask at the end of the aquatic center season for the pool that we receive a, a season end report. Just kind of update, you know, expenses, what the revenue was, where we stand for it at the end of the season. If that's something you put together.
I'll have it for you the next.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Uh, do you have any info on, speaking of the pool, do you have any information on, uh, how much water was lost this year during?
Off the jet with, uh, the, they make all.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be kind of nice to provide on that. Yeah, I did.
Anybody else need a copy?
I think I did. Got all kinds of shit.
You gave him a bunch of other ones.
No, I got a copy of these one on vacation again. That's correct. Is there any other?
I deserve that.
We'll take, I guess, anyway, just get rid of that.
That's all I have left, but I will be on vacation next week, so.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to good of the order, um, Mr. Ross, would you like to start us off?
Um, yes, actually, my first thought is overdue quite a bit because I don't think we've had a regular meeting with good of the order since I saw that this happened. But I would like to thank Stuart Brooks, Betty Young and Hocking College for the ceramic starworks that they placed on the West Water do around about. I think those are adorable, um, and a nice way to welcome folks, um, coming that way into our city. Um, I also want to thank, um, all of the folks who have come out, um, and participated in public comment and public discussion, um, over the past few months especially, um, there's been, uh, there's been more people participating, um, I want to recognize that.
Uh, Mr. Lawson, I have nothing, I may be out. Uh, Mr. Flowers?
I'd just like to reiterate the, um, the code enforcement meeting that Austin and Melissa and I attended. It's a quarterly meeting. I've been going through it and I've hosted two of them down, uh, the lodge at Hocking College. And they're very informative and what Austin said is after, we're not punishing people. We're trying to help people improve their lifestyle and the city's, uh, appearance, of course, in that, in that project. So this code enforcement, they have people that come that can help these citizens that are in code violations. And we, they, we can fix up your house, we can do the coughing, we can make it more efficient, whatever's in, we can do this. So it's really a nice little meeting to have and to get that resource. And every, every quarter, we have that meeting. It's the southeastern Ohio Code Enforcement Officer Meeting. That sounded good, didn't it? But, uh, but anyway, um, uh, we, we, we get a lot done in there and we get a lot of the information and I think Austin was very impressed with it. And I'm real excited about being able to work with him and help clean up the city with, uh,
That's great.
With that knowledge. That's all I have.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I also wanted to thank the folks that came out to the records retention meeting, um, that Mr. Holmes had earlier this evening. I want to thank Mr. Holmes for making that, for getting this process started and making it, um, transparent, accessible to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson?
No.
No.
Mr. Peck?
No.
Um, I've been away from council for a period of time, um, so I'd like to catch up a little bit on a few thank yous. One to, um, Taylor Sappington, who has obviously moved on to county auditor. Uh, or I'm sorry, county treasurer. Um, I wanna thank him for his service. I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Nick Smith, an appointed, uh, city auditor. Um, Mr. McCray Powell, appointed at city treasurer. And Mr. Wes Anderson, Wesley, who are being appointed to council. And I was absent during the process of ordinance fifty-four twenty-five. Had I been here, I would have voted to support that ordinance, so I wanna make that clear. And with that, uh, I will say five. And Mr. Taylor, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, I, there's been a lot of talk on Facebook, obviously, um, but I wanted to state that I am right. I am a write-in candidate for the December problem. Um, I was asked by someone who I have a lot of respect for, um, asked me to, uh, you know, sit in for the month of December, so I am, uh, running only for the month of December um, as a write-in candidate, so I thought I wanted to make that clear because I think there's a lot of, uh, misinformation out there. But I am, I am running for that position and there's also just been a lot of talk on Facebook, a lot of critical, um, comments being made about people, uh, that are on council currently or that have stepped up to fill positions of vacancy, but I did wanna put in context for people that, um, may not be aware. So at the last special meeting we had, there were seven individuals in that room that were on the next ballot, uh, for an office. And when vacancies arrived, only, including one that we knew was gonna be a planned vacancy, only three people stepped up to even put their name in, in the ring for those positions. Um, so I think that's, I think that says a lot about those individuals that are, that state that they want change in this community, they want to participate in this community and then, but the ones that actually stepped up and put their name in the hat, I think it says a lot about their character versus individuals that say they want to affect change but then choose not to, or they don't wanna participate in that role. And I just, I just, actions to me speak a lot louder than words, so I just think that that's an important reference that needs to be made and, uh, hopefully other people are paying attention as well. That's all I have.
Right, thank you. Um, at this time, I make a motion to go into executive session under O R C. One twenty-one point two-two G for personnel and legal matters, uh, by Mr. Rowe and Mr. Holmes. And I will note the time at ten fourteen, if somebody would like to second the motion.
That's the last second.
Clear call roll, please.
Flowers?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
A motion to return from executive session at ten thirty-six.
So moved.
Second.
There it is. And motion to adjourn.
Wait, we need to, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry. Um, is anyone who left though? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Kuman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Flowers?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Kuman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Turn at ten thirty-seven.